Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. Present this evening, we have Mr. Richard Clark, Vice Chairman, Mr. Steve Watroba, Clerk of the Board, Mr. Thomas Chanacki, Member, Mr. Daniel Edmiston, Member. We have William Scanlon, Art Town Planner, and myself, Kai Horn, Chairman. First order on our agenda for this evening is approval of minutes from January 26, 2022. Anybody have a chance to review the minutes and would they like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the meeting minutes for January 26, 2022, as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll make a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, we were all present for that meeting. Get some copies. Go.
You want to start that way, we'll come back around.
Okay, next item up on our agenda for this evening, A and R plans, we have one for Dennis Carter, Woodmere Road and West Main Street. Okay, so this was the one that we looked at last week, but there was nothing checked off for waivers, and now it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five waivers. So, Bill, is that right, number one is a waiver, two signed?
No, I got that, that's not really a waiver.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. All right, so we'd be looking for a waiver on, it would be six D, names and street numbers of all the butters as determined from the most recent tax list, and the next waiver would be six E, topography of the land and contours at intervals of two feet, and the next waiver would be six G, location of wetland resources and boundaries within the proposed lots, and six I, which is evidence that each building lot to be created has adequate access, including access, including access road to the site, and then six J, a profile of existing grades of the proposed access to the lot. Does everybody want to look at that plan again, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can we get the plan again? lots one, is that correct?
Yes.
And lots two and three both have frontage on West Main Street, Route 197. This is what, 43,000 square foot zone, and all the lots are over that.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only waiver that I would question would be the six G about the wetlands, but this is in a determination to make if these lots are buildable or not, because they would need a certain amount of upland, wouldn't they?
They would.
No.
So, that, you know, the building inspector would make that determination.
How does he make that determination if he doesn't have any topography?
He would have to have it at that time.
Before a building permit would be issued.
But I guess my potential objection would be, for example, if lot number two with 50,000 square feet only has 30,000 of upland and needs 75%, that it should be marked on this plan that the lot would not be, not buildable. That would, that would be my objection.
The planning board jurisdiction is limited to frontage and access, so if a lot has adequate frontage, that's required by zoning, and has access from a public way, and that's sufficient for the planning board to act.
Then I guess I'm good to go?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not quite good to go. I do have a question regarding access. I understand what you said, the last two Board of Selectmen meetings, the police chief has spoken specifically about that road, West Main, Route 197, as being hazardous. In the last selectmen's meeting, he mentioned specifically two serious rollover accidents on that road. I don't see, how is someone going to access these lots? If they're coming in off of 197, I can't envision that making the situation on 197 any better. It can only be worse. We already have more lots, if you will, being built not very far from this property, and potential for another retail establishment across the way, all of which is going to increase the volume of traffic on that road. And whatever has it exists is not going to diminish, not in the least bit. You know, again, I think we've got a ten-pound bag here in terms of 197, or we're trying to put 12 pounds of something in it.
So...
I don't know, again, this is LI 43, okay, there's limited options in terms of the use table for LI 43 currently, unless we look for some kind of special provision. Do you have any sense of what it is that is going to be done, if we're done with these lots?
I don't right at this present time, just, first of all, we just have to find out if it's approved, but three lots or not.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know what his plans are.
LI 43 is not residential.
He's aware of that, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about through use of the town planner. If, if topography and conservation wetlands are not within our jurisdiction, why is it on the checklist for an A and R? Why does, why does he have to request a waiver for it? Why can't you just, why is it not, why is it required of him if it's beyond our jurisdiction?
Well, it's a good question, I mean, I think it's just to provide more information to the board about what's going on on the property. The, the question of access is, is there any, are there any physical impediments to getting access to the buildable area of the lot?
Well, okay, so there is a stream, I don't know whether or not to characterize it as an intermittent or whatever kind of, but there is some sort of water that runs through that property that comes down to Tufts Hill there, and, you know, where that's located in reference to his plan, I have no idea. So, that's something I would like to see, so that's why I'm, I'm with Dan here on the wetlands. And then, I believe, Mr. Horn had mentioned last week, or I'm sorry, at last meeting, we talked about the topography there, that's pretty steep, slope's pretty steep there, and I know you're saying that, well, even if we grant the A and R, the building inspector could say it's too steep, too steep to build.
Would it satisfy the driveway bylaw?
Yeah, so, I don't know, I'd like to know what the, other board members' thoughts are on the topography, if that's, and then these other, these other waivers here, I don't understand why, these seem like they're pretty simple to add, why weren't they just done? Why weren't they just taken care of?
Yeah, the butters.
Yeah.
That's just a lot of...
I mean, the only thing that, the only thing that, that struck me the most was the fact that there was no, which would be J, profiles of existing grades in the proposed of the access lot. In the past, we've waived topography because it's expensive to get it put on A and R lots, but typically, we do have, we do have the upland amount of land listed on the lots, and typically, if we ask for the profile of the existing grades, they'll give us something.
Okay, I see your point, so we don't need a full topographical survey, we just need...
I mean, what I, what I was looking for is to try to avoid the situation we just had over there, it was a prospect of, or progress Ave, where lots were approved, there was no topography, you know, no access shown, and two houses got built, and they were both outside of the driveway bylaw, so...
Yeah, and if I could just jump onto something that Steve said about the wetlands, the wetlands, I believe, and I know that the driveway bylaws, it's all in our bylaws pretty much, and I believe that everybody in the town, especially a member who's serving the town, should be a watchdog to make sure that's being taken care of, and that we're sitting here on the front line, trying to make sure that our, that the laws and rules of our town are being met, and we're being told it's not in our responsibility, and I don't find that right. I don't find that right at all.
So, member in A and R's approval not required, so you're not really approving...
But then we have to approve the waivers, right?
You approve the waivers from your...
So, if we don't approve the waivers, and it's not approved, then it has to come back, correct?
Correct, correct.
And that's what it's all about?
Yes.
All right, so, this is information that we would need in order to be able to better judge on it.
In essence, he does need our approval, he needs us to approve these waivers, otherwise this doesn't move forward.
You could look at it that way, right, if you don't approve the waivers.
That is how it is.
Right, and then you'd have to go back and have that information put on the plan.
So, could, could we, could we agree on what we, what we would be willing to waive and what we wouldn't be willing to waive?
Well, I'm a no on J, and which one's wetlands?
The G.
G. Yeah, I'm a no on G and J.
I'm a no on I.
Okay, so G, J, I.
And I don't understand number one, who signed the original?
That's already taken care of, that's what I asked Bill.
That has been taken care of, okay.
That's not a waiver.
All right.
So, G, I, and J. So, G is the wetland resources locations, J is evidence that each lot to be created has adequate access, including access onto the road site, and then J, which is the profile of the existing grades of the proposed access to the lot. So, I think, if you could, if you could give this plan back to your engineer, ask him to do the wetland delineations on it, so you know where that is, and do a proposal of where the, where the access points for these two new lots would be along this Route 197 West Main Street, where do you think you could have the best access, and then, when he does that, when he identifies the access, he needs to give you a, usually they do a cross-sectional view to show what the slope would be for the driveway, because the driveway bylaw in the Town of Dudley says it has to be less than 12%. Is it 12?
6%.
6%, 6%, so the driveway access has to be less than 6% for the first 50 feet.
Why did you say the waivers, all I needed was the waivers, ask for waivers, and it was okay?
Who said that?
No, I said, I said if you could get some...
You gave me this paper last week.
When you, when you came here last week, none of this was filled out.
Right, right.
I said if you could get some of these things filled out, I said if you can't get them all filled out, just ask for the, ask for a waiver. Like, topography, we've waived in the past, but typically, we don't waive, we don't waive the profile of existing grades, we don't typically waive wetland locations, because it's, it's good to know that, like, what they were just saying, if you have, if you have a lot that's 75% not usable, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't approve it as a lot, if it's not usable. Or if you have a stream running through your frontage, and you don't have a way to access it.
You're sure there's a stream there? I haven't walked on it, I don't know, I don't know what's up there, it could be all dry. Have you guys walked up there? You, you been up there?
There's a narrow, a lot of people go pretty fast, so they don't notice it, but when you're coming up Tufts Hill from the South Beach direction, coming towards Dudley, before you get to the courthouse, you look to the right, you look into those woods, they, there's quite a slope there, there's an area where this, I would characterize it as a gorge, or it's a narrow, deep cut that water comes out of almost every time that I see it. I don't know what you call that, I'm not a stream expert.
I don't call it wetlands.
I call it water flowing out of rocks and hills. A wetlands guy will tell you what it is, and he'll put it on the, on the plan.
So, what we're saying is basically, you know, we could, we could grant the waivers for the, the street names and the butters, and we could grant the waiver for the topography, because I understand that that is expensive to get done, but the other three things we would like to see, we would like to see you put that on the plan, so we don't have to grant the waivers. Did you get what numbers we're talking about?
No.
Okay, I can give you a copy of this right here, it's already circled for you.
G, J, and I.
J and I, you said?
G.
E.
J.
E.
And I.
Yep.
Wow. I'll just leave these, yeah, we'll do, stop back there in a week, you can pick them up, all right?
There you go.
Okay, so it is 7:15, and we do have a continuation of a public hearing on the Fish Road definitive plan, so we'll pick up the Country Club Acres LLC lot merger plan, we'll pick that up at the end.
Good evening. Jonathan Angelovich with DJT Properties.
I don't have to read the announcement?
So, I had a flurry of activity on this project today.
I'm guessing so, by all the number of handouts that we had.
So, the last, the last meeting of the planning board had just gotten the peer review from Graves Engineering, and so the engineer had only had a short round of time to review it, but agreed to make the changes, which he did, he sent it back to Graves for review, Graves reviewed it, and I believe I sent that report to you previously, and then there was still some work that needed to be done, so it went back to Jeff again for the, this would be the fourth peer review, and he submitted the report to us today, so you hadn't seen it yet, so it is in your binder, you might want to take a minute to look at it, then tab E, you can see the...
February 7th?
February 9th.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, I suggest you take a few minutes to just sort of look at it over, he only commented on the things that were outstanding as of his previous peer review, and most of them have been satisfied, where she has acknowledged.
Bill?
I guess it's that, maybe.
Bill?
That's about the third page.
Bill? Before we get started on this, I wasn't here for the original meeting, right?
Yes.
I didn't fill out the Mullen paperwork, so I can excuse myself from this, do I have to do that formally?
Right. And for the record, Tom did watch the proceedings of the meeting, and filled out the Mullen reform, so he is eligible to vote on this. You can participate, you just can't vote.
Deal.
Okay, so based on the letter from Graves Engineering dated February 9th, 2022, that's today, I'm looking through it quickly, I'm seeing acknowledgement, WZBA for variances, and the WZBA has granted the requests, number 16, now page three, please refer to comments 36 and 38, so if I look at 36 and 38, 36 is an acknowledgement, and 38 still has comments.
33, I believe I sent you the fire chief's comments on the system, and has agreed to put it in a...
Precast.
System, so the chief was satisfied with that.
Okay. 34th says no further comment.
Number 20.
Number 20?
I think that was from number, the seven's ready.
Need to be looking at the definitive plan.
So, I'm looking at the response from Graves on 29.
You've got to be the definitive plan, you're looking at major site plan review. That's for the next, the next public hearing, I think it's enough.
Should be on D.
D?
Okay. There you go. So, these are the four items identified.
Just confusingly fast, so many of these things.
Number 34, Mr. Chairman, no further comment necessary.
Yeah, 34 is okay, 36 is an acknowledgement, that's fine, 37 is an acknowledgement, that's fine. The question, the question that's left, it looks like to me, is 38 and 39.
I believe 39, he dropped off the stamp plans this afternoon, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the stamped plans?
Yes.
Okay.
38, my understanding is, is that the plan is drawn correctly, the math in the hydraulic report works, it's just for some reason, some verbiage was, the correct verbiage is in the last revision, not in this revision he submitted, so it's a quick email tomorrow, just to resubmit them, delete a line, add a line.
So, do you think 38 would be taken care of with the plans that were dropped off, with the stamped plans?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, we, we need to submit those stamp plans back to Graves to make sure 38 and 39 is applicable, or... So, we went from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items down to two items, and we believe that their, that was dropped off today.
Yes, and I know Jeff has a copy, electronic copy as well.
Okay, so we just need to get the feedback from Jeff on those last two items, which would be number 38 and 39. And, did I also see a copy? So, with the, the copy that was included in our binder from Summit Engineering and Surveying on February 7th, 2022, the list of waivers, is that still up to date?
Yes.
So, on that, on that, the waivers, the seven waivers, we'll just go over them quickly. Road cross section, requesting, request allowing proposed road cross section instead of Town of Dudley stand across road section because of limited area at the beginning of the proposed roadway. Number two was streets with minimum right-of-way, requesting a 40-foot right-of-way instead of the 50-foot right-of-way due to the existing property lines. Number three was streets, again, with minimum pavement width, allowing a 20-foot wide pavement instead of the 30-foot pavement due to the existing paved width, and also due to the property lines. Number four, open space parks and playgrounds, allowing no, no proposed open space for the proposed project due to the minimum area of the existing parcel in the location of the development. Number five, sidewalks, request no sidewalks, instead of sidewalks on both sides because of minimal area and parcel layout, and no sidewalks in the area. Number six was dead-end length of dead-end, allowing a 90-foot cul-de-sac instead of the minimum 200-foot cul-de-sac, and number seven was electric, allowing no streetlights to be installed along the new roadway. So, those would be the proposed waivers, and I do believe that the applicant has stated a number of times at other previous meetings, that in lieu of doing the sidewalks on this particular cul-de-sac, you would be willing to make...
A sidewalk from West Dudley Road to the opening of our, our roadway.
To, to provide for the children that live in the neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay.
And for the open space, we, like I mentioned last time, we bought some picnic tables for the park and whatnot.
Okay. So, Bill, what, how can we proceed on this with those two outliers that, that were turned on today, question 38 and 39, could we approve?
No minor issues, I think, just technical corrections that can be made, I don't think it affects the plan at all.
Okay, so we, we could vote, vote for an approval with those two items being addressed and acknowledged by Graves?
By myself, yes.
Okay. And we would have to vote on the waivers.
I did speak with an abbot today about the sidewalk issue, if you wanted to come before you tonight to talk about that.
Okay, so do we have anybody here this evening to speak? Come on up.
Cheryl Lito at 38 West Dudley Road. Yes, I had heard, we watched the last planning board meeting, and we had heard about the sidewalks from West Dudley Road, the corner of West Dudley Road and Fish, going up to the Quarry Road, and also the widening of that road along that path. Our property at 38 West Dudley abuts Fish for about 600-plus feet, and so we were just concerned about, you know, whether that road, how that would affect our property, and which side of the road the sidewalk would be on.
The right side turning on the Fish Road from West Dudley.
Okay, and we have alongside Fish, there's a drainage dish, ditch where water runs along, it's already sort of backlogging onto our property because it's, it's just not maintained, I guess, so we just were concerned about how this widening of the roadway would affect our property, and that, that was really, that was a concern. I believe it's a separate plan that you're going to submit, or...
It wouldn't be a separate plan, no, it's, and I think the town highway department has already gone in front of the selectmen for approval to put the roadway in, it's pretty much a widening of five or six feet to the right side of West Dudley coming in off of...
Okay, so it doesn't actually affect our side?
No, correct, 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 but we'd like to look at the drainage issue while we're there.
All right, I appreciate it, just being kept in the loop, that's all.
Hundred percent, yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to speak? So, if we don't have any other comments from the public, then we could close the public hearing and start our voting process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing at, let's see, 7, 7:27, 28? And I think the first thing we should vote on would be the proposed waivers. If somebody would like to make a motion on the, on the seven waivers that I previously read, the three, on the requested sheet from Summit Engineering and Survey dated February 7th, 2022, regarding waiver requests to accompany application of approval of definitive plan end of Fish Road, assessors map 220, lot number eight.
You want to do this one, Richard?
I'm looking for the legal description of that property.
Oh, I have a question, yeah?
You have a question?
No, but apparently you do.
Oh. No, I'm, I'm looking how I want to voice this motion. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the definitive plan and grant all seven waivers requested for the end of Fish Road, assessors map, number 220, lot eight, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I think the way he made the motion, they're both approved at once.
Right, that's okay.
Sorry.
That isn't a problem, is it? I thought we thoroughly discussed the waivers last time.
Yeah, but sometimes we would, we would make a motion separate for the waivers, and then a motion for the definitive plan, but that's okay.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind for next time.
It's fine.
So, I won't have a decision ready for the next meeting for you to...
Okay, and you'll check to make sure that 38 and 39 were acknowledged by Graves Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, I've voted in the definitive plan at this time.
We did.
We did, we combined it one motion, thank you.
Are you okay with that, Richard? Do you understand?
I got you.
Okay, just...
I'll get it out of the second cover.
Okay, so... So we are on schedule, ironically, so that works out. Continuation of a public hearing for the marijuana cultivation special permit, Fish Road LLC, Forty Fish Road. So we'll take that one up. That's in the next tab in the book.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The well report came in this afternoon.
Okay.
Did I give you a copy yet?
No. I have one already.
Do you have one?
Okay.
Yeah.
So this was an outside consultant that we asked to give a review of what was previously done for the well report?
Correct.
So again, since this just came in today, you haven't seen it yet, and I want to take a minute. It was just a page with some attachments.
Was, was a copy of this given to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
This afternoon.
Do we want to just read it in for the record?
Might not be a bad idea. It's not all that long.
Volunteer, Mr. Clark?
Oh. Mr. Chairman, I would be honored.
Thank you.
Okay, the reporting question is from Northeast Geoscience Incorporated. They apparently are located in Clinton, Massachusetts. Address to Mr. Scanlon, dear Mr. Scanlon, as requested, Northeast Geoscience Incorporated, NGI, has reviewed the results of a pumping test conducted at the above- referenced site by Lafran Bossier, excuse my French, well drilling and water service in June of two thousand twenty-one, Appendix A. A cannabis cultivation facility is proposed for the property. The initial plan is to grow up to fifty thousand feet of canopy with an estimated water demand of twelve thousand five hundred gallons per day or an average daily withdrawal rate of eight point seven gallons per minute. Future plans include requesting state approval for growing up to one hundred thousand feet of canopy for water demands of twenty-five thousand gallons per day, seventeen point three six gallons per minute. Due to the fact the initial development will have fewer than twenty-five employees, a public water supply is not required at this time. An existing private bed well, a bedrock well is present at the Forty Fish Road property. The nearest private well is located over two hundred feet to the north at Thirty-Eight Fish Road. A pumping test was conducted on the Forty Fish Road well in an effort to estimate the well yield and water quality and to determine if the well interfered with Thirty-Eight Fish Road well. The well at Forty Fish Road was initially pumped for approximately one thousand minutes at seven gallons per minute. Due to a pump failure, the pump testing was shut down for approximately six hours. After the well pump was replaced, the pumping test was restarted at a rate of five gallons per minute and pumping continued for an additional four days. Water levels in both wells were recorded throughout the test using data logging electronic pressure transducers. See attached graph. The well serving Thirty-Eight Fish Road was in normal use during the pumping test. The data provided by Lafran Bossier do not appear to show interference between the two wells. In addition, the minimum water levels, non-pumping conditions, and the maximum water levels, pumping conditions in the Thirty-Eight Fish Road well increased throughout the test, suggesting some water level recovery occurred throughout the pumping test, further supporting limited well interference. The pumping test conducted on the Forty Fish Road well was intended only to estimate the well yield, identify significant interference between the two wells, and to characterize the water quality, and the test achieved the intended goals. However, the results do not indicate if the well is capable of meeting the daily demands at the proposed development, since the well was only pumped at a rate of five gallons per minute and insufficient water level recovery data was provided to determine if the proposed withdrawals were sustainable. Additional testing would be required on this well or additional future wells to make this determination, including, one, a few days of non-pumping water levels prior to the pumping test. Two, pumping at a rate of at least five gallons per minute to achieve the minimum average daily withdrawal volume noted above. And three, sufficient water recovery data, ninety-five percent recovery, to support the yield estimates, yield estimate. In addition, it is suggested that prior to further testing, the private well owners in the vicinity be notified of the testing so that they can indirectly monitor their wells during the test to ensure that there are no impacts from the proposed water withdrawals. Also, due to the favorable topographic and hydro, hydro, hydraulic setting of the site, the owners may want to investigate the possibility of utilizing a shallow gravel well for irrigation purposes to eliminate potential bedrock well impacts. If you have any questions or require additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Joel Frisch, F R I C S H P G, Principal Senior Hydrologist, Hydrogeologist. I apologize for any mispronunciations, names or places.
Okay, so basically on, on that review, it basic, from what I got out of it, it doesn't, it didn't, it basically stated that the two wells that you tested were not linked.
Right, were impacted, correct.
Right. But you're not proposing to use the well that's currently.
We're going to have to, once we drill a well on the site for the, the site plan, we'll have to do the same type of test again.
Right, so you'll repeat the test and you'll identify the neighbors in the neighborhood so that they can be aware that that's going on? And I think the gentleman that was here last time, Mr. La, Mr. Lafran?
Yes.
Said that he could actually put transducers in everybody's well if they were willing to make sure that they were not losing or having a drop in the water.
Yep.
And that would happen once you get to that point with the.
Yes.
Progress of this facility.
We need to know how much water we can produce anyway, because we know we need X, and if we fall below it, then we got to buy it. So it's, we need to know that anyway.
Okay.
Your, your new well going to be further away?
Yeah, we're another four hundred feet further south from this one, so it's.
I think this one's at two hundred, right? And, and in a better top.
Better, yeah, better topographic areas, we're lower.
Yeah. Okay. A couple of un-well related questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, in our zoning bylaws, I think there's reference to decommissioning of a marijuana facility.
Yes.
Is that something that's part of the host agreement?
It's, it's mandated on the regulations from the CCC that we have a bond through a bond company. We use Pacific Charity. And that bond lists the CCC as well as the entity on it. And the purpose of that bond is that in the event that there is any decommissioning to that site or any sort of product left there, that, that bond is triggered so that the town and the state can utilize the proceeds from that bond to make sure that that facility is properly decommissioned.
All right, does someone in town government have a copy of that document?
I believe it was, it was likely provided to them in the host agreement in part, but we can certainly provide it. We, we have access to, we already have it in place. It gets renewed on a yearly basis. And it has to be provided with our license renewal to the state on a yearly basis so that they understand that's in place, it's been paid for. Because they don't want any expense going to either themselves or the town in case someone ever just walked away.
So part of the review process is to take into account perhaps inflation with regards to the cost changing over time in order for that to be effective at the point of decommissioning?
One hundred percent. I, off the top of my head, I cannot remember what the amount of the bond is, but the CCC adjusts it on a yearly basis for per project. So a cultivation bond, for example, is much higher than a bond for a retail store, because they understand if there was a decommissioning on a cultivation site, there'd be much more work done.
So that's with Cannabis Control Commission?
It's what the Cannabis Control Commission gets that because they, they require it as part of their license renewal.
So we have to pay for it no matter what?
We pay for it.
So that is on file with the Cannabis Control Commission, if not with the town of Dudley and perhaps the town of Dudley could be.
I can certainly provide the town of Dudley, and it is one hundred percent on file with the Cannabis Control Commission as a requirement of us getting that provisional license we've been issued.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that?
One hundred percent.
With the.
I can send it to Mr. Tomorrow.
Mr. Scanlon, thank you.
One hundred percent.
I understand, I, I looked at the Cannabis Control Commission website today and I, as I understood it, there were three hundred and six facilities cultivators in the state of Massachusetts, thirty licensed pending. Are you in the pending category or are you in part of the three hundred and six?
So we, so their, their schedule of licenses is very misconceiving. So we have a provisional license, so on their map, we are considered to have a license. Pending is if you had provided your application in there, but had not yet been forwarded on the commissioners to deem that your application met all the requirements. So there's, on their map, there's no difference between a provisional license and a final license. It's just saying that you have a license to open up a cultivation facility. So those three hundred and six, there are not three hundred and six open cultivations at this point. You know, for example, are the three hundred and six, both Chase, Chase Ave and this facility count as two of those three hundred and six, even though they're not currently operational?
I guess I, that.
We tend to give a provisional license.
You're, are you in the three oh six or you in the thirty?
Three oh six.
Three oh six, okay. Other question, if I may.
Yes.
The host agreement, is that public record and that on file?
It's certainly public record.
Okay, and how would someone from the public?
Bill would have access.
It was also in our application.
Application packet, yeah.
The town has it, the selectmen have it, it should be on file to town. I can certainly provide to anybody that has it. The CCC has it.
Right. It was, if I remember right, it was three percent of the gross.
It's three percent of the gross, which is the max under state law of all gross sales. I believe there was a, there was also a charitable contribution that we, we put in willingly, because it can't be under, you know, under law, we, they can't be forced upon us, but we had, you know, stated that we would also do a charitable contribution on a yearly basis. And right now, we're paying ten thousand dollars per quarter, while, until we get a final license to the town, and then ultimately on that first actual three percent payment per quarter, we would get credit for any of the ten thousand dollars we've already paid into the town.
I appreciate that you're giving us the highlights in terms of the dollars and cents, but I'm sure there's other verbiage in there in addition to those numbers.
It's, you know.
In the host agreement, that is.
You guys use, you guys use KP Law. I would say every town in Southern Western County likely uses them, and at this point, the host agreements are nearly identical because there's been some litigation that, you know, led to the fact that they all ultimately have the same verbiage in them, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the board?
Not right now.
So I'll open it up to the public. Does there any from the public like to speak about this project?
I get to sign in? Please.
Hi, I'm Bob St. John, thirty-eight Fish Road, the primary of butter, I guess, with the best view. Just a couple of questions. I know that they've been very forthcoming and very open. I want to say I do appreciate that, Jonathan. You guys have been very, very transparent and it's been appreciated. One question is pending approval. When you start construction, what time in the morning do you anticipate any construction vehicles, loud noises, stuff that might wake me up?
It won't be before seven, I can tell you that.
Okay, good. Because I'm, I'm up at six-thirty.
No, it won't be, it won't be before seven.
That's, that's excellent.
We can, we can set the hours of operation as part of the conditions.
Isn't there a town, Mr. Chairman, isn't there a town bylaw already? Voice?
Not that I'm aware of, but I know in the past, we have set, we have set hours for operation hours on, as a condition of approval.
All right, I thought that there was just something that said that townwide you could start construction projects that were going to make a lot of noise.
My current concern is the, the road widening will be immediately on my, well, not on my.
Yeah, yeah, right, right next to it, right.
Property, you know, thirty feet from my front porch.
The hours, that's for sure.
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah.
You guys will do fine. And the other thing is, is the direct view and the lighting around the perimeter as far as security lighting. I know last meeting Nick talked about trees and I have a picture on my phone, but the trees would have to be about thirty feet high to block the view from my front porch, so. What plans, I mean, what are the plans for the security lighting around the perimeter?
So all security lighting is downcast lighting, to make sure that we can control that. Additionally, because of technology, the, the lighting is also not a very substantial amount, because the camera systems that are used by the security company have to be able to actually record, you know, in a night vision mode for any facility. So really, at this point, the, the downcast lighting is just to kind of illuminate certain areas for security personnel, but it's not going to illuminate the entire facility. Because the camera technology at this point allows for that to, to track any sort of movement without having sufficient lighting.
Excellent, thank you. And plans for the current house at Forty Fish Road? I know you said you'd use it for security.
Security, yeah.
Would there be additional lighting for that or?
I don't have to put anything up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because what you've got right.
Probably just an under porch light, on the front of the porch.
What you've got right now is fine. I mean, it's, it's adequate for everything that you need and it doesn't bother me at all. Well, and again, I'd like to thank DJT for being so open, transparent, and working so well with the community. You know, I've got nothing to gain one way or the other, other than a view of the greenhouses. Maybe a little bit more traffic, but hopefully not too much without the sidewalks, without the lighting and everything on the end of the road. So again, just want to thank them for their transparency and openness and thank the board for going along with the waivers that were near to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did receive, again today, from Graves Engineering, another report for the, for this project. So if we want to go through that report now, it looks like. He has here zoning bylaws number six, that was acknowledged. The next item on the, on the list was fifteen, no further comments necessary. Seventeen, acknowledge sheet C three point oh was revised to eliminate snow storage at the fire system. Number twenty, the applicant responded via email correspondence that stone is being considered for landscaping purposes. This does not meet the landscaping requirements of section five point zero four, point zero five K. As, such as shade trees of at least two inch, of at least two inch in trunk diameter or plantings in shrubbery. Graves Engineering respectfully defers to the planning board the type and extent of the landscaping required for the parking area. So this is under number twenty on his, on Graves' review. So I guess in your, in your proposal, you're showing crushed stone all around the.
Yeah.
Is the crushed stone going to be the primary parking pad or is that going to?
No, this will be, this is asphalt right here. This is all pavement, and then this is all gravel, access road.
Okay, so that's all the crushed stone?
Yeah, so this will, any of the landscape areas will be crushed stone in between.
And is it beyond the crushed stone, is that going to be loomed and seeded?
It's loomed and seeded, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll come back to number twenty. Let's keep going and see what the rest of them are. Twenty-one, we had some hydrology, stormwater management, reviewed the hydrology calculations and found them to be in order. That was twenty-one. No issues with compliance with the stormwater standards, number twenty-four. Number twenty-seven, acknowledge pipe sizing calculations were submitted in an order for the catch basin CB seven and DCB eight. To the flared end section FES four at basin two, so that's, seems to be taken care of also. Let me get on to number thirty. Sheet C four point zero was revised to show the top and bottom elevations of the proposed retaining walls. The planning board may wish to include a condition in its decision that requires retaining walls to be designed by a structural engineer prior to construction. How high of a retaining wall are we talking about?
I know he changed one. I honestly haven't read it since he changed it. I know he removed the impediment. She was nervous about.
The report from Graves states between six and eighteen feet.
Okay, would you guys have a problem getting a structural engineer to, to review the retaining walls before you build them?
Nope. Yeah, this one's at two feet, this one's at five feet, this one's at two feet. Top of a wall, bottom of a wall. This one's at two and a half feet, two feet. This one's at ten feet, two feet. So most of them are mine, below, we have one section about.
The two feet aren't scaring me, but the ten and the eighteen might be.
Yeah, I don't see an eighteen on here. But I. It's fourteen. I can get it, I can have no problem getting a structural engineer as well, yeah, it's not a problem.
It only benefits you too.
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I could, you know, we could submit those plans or whatever you want to do.
Okay. So we have to check that one. Okay, so into the next one. This is talking about the February seventh. The plans were revised to remove access impediments along the drainage segment. So that was taken care of. Then we jumped down to number thirty-two, acknowledged the table was revised where necessary. Number thirty-four, acknowledged the plans were revised. Number thirty four, acknowledged the plans were revised to include an emergency spillway for infiltration basin number one. Number thirty seven, we have an acknowledgement, construction detail was revised to include an invert through, invert trough. Okay. Number thirty eight, we had no further comment necessary. Forty two, no further comment necessary. Forty three, no further comment necessary. Forty four, acknowledged, the parking area was revised to propose, to provide parking spaces twenty feet long, and the access aisle width of twenty four feet was maintained. So I think we're back to two, that gets us back down to two issues, one of which was the retaining walls, which you just said you'd be willing to have the structural engineer do the plans on for you.
Yes, sir.
And then that, only other one that leaves us with a question is the number twenty, which is the landscape area, which.
Chairman, I can read that section if you like.
Yeah, please.
Subsection K, parking area landscaping. Site plans involving more than thirty parking spaces shall provide interior landscaping covering not less than five percent of the total area of the parking area. In total, there shall be provided one shade tree placed within the parking lot for every ten spaces, and complemented by shrubs and other planting material. Such tree shall be at least two inches in trunk diameter at the time of planting, and should be located in planting beds at least six feet in width or diameter. Snow removal activity should be considered when plant, planning for parking area landscaping. In case it can be shown to the planning board that the planting of trees is impractical, the planning board may authorize plantings in shrubbery instead of trees.
Can I ask, based on your current layout, is there any of the butters that are going to see this parking lot from, from their property? You'll see the parking lot?
Yes, they will directly. My house sits probably.
Yeah, his house sits right here, yeah.
So would you, what, so right now your proposal's lacking the trees and the shrubbery, what would be your preference?
Mine? I think, believe that they don't want to try to go with any type of pollinating plants, I believe, so we can go with some type of shrubbery if you like, yeah.
Okay. Would that be acceptable to the butters? Yeah?
Or we can plant trees up on top here if they'd like, that's, that's fine too, you know?
Behind the greenhouses?
Yeah, yep, we can, instead of planting things down in this area here, and just do this in stone, I can put trees up here if you'd like, you know?
Right here.
Right. Down here, yeah.
So anything? It would only have to be about six feet high, because my house sits probably eighty or a hundred feet above where the parking lot sits, so I look straight down over the barn, over the house, into the parking lot where they're proposing it to be. Nobody think.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, with the, with the greenhouses so close to the, to the parking area there, they're not going to obstruct your view of the parking area?
Not a hundred percent sure, they're what, sixteen feet high, but they're kind of a convoluted surface on the top, so they, they may block the view. My wife and I are more concerned as people turn the corner and drive up, this is an uphill slant, that it would be pointed right at our house, bedroom, living room.
Lights in the evening.
And where, as we've spoken before, one or two cars a week come down there at night, it would be different.
So if they were to plant a row of arborvitae's or something at the end of the parking lot?
Definitely, we talked about it, we talked about before putting shrubs on the shrubbery trees up here, so we can do that, that's fine.
I mean, as I said before, they're working very closely with us and being very open, so I'm not totally concerned about it.
Just so you know, it's going to be years before those arborvitae's are even tall, even as tall as the sixteen foot greenhouses. And even if we did require the two inch trees on the parking areas, they're not going to do anything to, they're, they're more, more likely to break up the monotony of the.
And provide shade.
Right. I'd be willing to work with Mr. St. John to come up with a solution, I'm sure.
Plenty of trees in the neighborhood.
Right.
Alright.
I get a problem.
If he wants to block it, we just, I don't think we need him in the parking lot. Does appear the trees, trees grow well in that area, at least.
Alright, so it would appear that all the issues are now covered on the engineer's report, with them accepting the additional retaining wall structural engineer clause and working on the landscaping for the butters.
Mr. Chairman, how would you like that condition to read in, in the decision regarding the landscaping?
We'd have to come up with something like.
So you're granting the, essentially you're going to grant a reduction of the landscaping files?
Grant a waiver on the trees in the parking lot area?
Could even put the language in lieu of.
In lieu of them landscaping around the facility to block the view from the neighbors, or to block the neighbors' view from the facility.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I thought, I understood the applicant as indicating that they were willing to do something in that regard, are we saying we're not going to look for that to happen?
No, we're saying in lieu of the requirement.
We want to document it, right.
In lieu of the requirement of landscaping in the parking area.
Right.
We're, we're opting for the option of having, or we're opting for having the applicant.
So there will be some landscaping in consideration, okay.
Alright, what are we talking about, arborvitae's? Plant a row of arborvitae's as a.
Screening of some kind, yes.
Right.
So, that's acceptable question?
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah. So we've had a last minute input from Graves and from Summit about the report, it's implied that everything's been worked into a plan, do we have these plans that are revised?
Yes, I got them today.
Right. Okay, do we get a chance to review, to look at them? I mean, it's, it's great that the chairman read everything off, but I have no idea what Storm Manhole SB three is, and where the invert is, and whether retain it right.
Yeah.
That plan's nice and pretty, but it has got no information on it, so without having action to have, have a look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, the actual plan hasn't changed since we submitted it, it's just a couple of, I think, verbiage things, items have changed.
Okay.
So sheet C dash two dash, or point zero was revised, states that a plan was revised. Sheet C dash four point zero was revised, states that a plan was revised, so plans are revised, I'd like to see them.
I don't think I have the final revised plans yet.
Okay, then we're not planning on voting tonight, then, I'm taking it.
It's up to you.
I don't know if we need to continue the, well, we have to continue the public hearing, but do we, do we need to, if we continue the public hearing, do we have to leave it open to the public until the next meeting?
Any, any public hearing, you have to allow public comment.
Okay. But we could close the public hearing and vote on it at the next meeting.
You could, yes.
After, after everybody had a chance to review the most up-to-date plans.
Just to be clear, I hadn't gotten the final, I don't recall.
Okay.
Actually getting them, but.
I can find out. Yeah, right.
I mean, the letter that I just read was dated today, February ninth, two thousand and twenty two, so the plan's probably not here yet.
That's my assumption.
They were at Graves, so Graves reviewed them, and he's given us his professional opinion.
Right, I say, is it possible to make the vote on it, granting a review in a letter, backing it up, or what's the? Well. Since. Whenever, whenever we vote, the plans become record, right? So we're going to vote on something that we don't have for record, I don't understand the sense behind that whatsoever.
Well, it's the board's pleasure, do you want to, you want to continue the public hearing till the next meeting, or do you want to close the public hearing now and then we'll just vote on this at the next?
I'm okay with closing the public hearing and pushing the vote to the next meeting after.
We get the plans, updated plans, and we have a chance.
The actual plans that will be recorded.
I would agree with that, yes.
If you'd like, I can have a draft decision for you, so you could both approve the plans and the decision, so that.
That'd be great, because then you can write the language in there, we don't have to, you know, do like I just did, mess it up.
Right, right.
Matter of fact, while we're on the subject, I was thinking about it, Mr. Chairman, what do you, wondering what the board's feelings would be about, we were talking about this condition regarding the professional engineer for retaining walls, I was thinking maybe we could add verbiage in there, retaining walls, say, over six feet, or over five feet?
Well, that's kind of what I was stating, because what, what you read states that the retaining walls are between two feet and six feet, which you don't necessarily. Well, some of them are bigger, I did read that, they are. And then the Graves report stated six to eighteen, there's a huge difference there, and just to kind of get an idea of what we're talking would be important. Right, I mean, we said we would definitely get the engineer plans, yeah.
And I mean, if you can, if you can get some, a structural engineer to do a design for you for, for all the, the retaining walls before the next meeting, you could bring that in, or you could submit it to Bill, and we would have that for the next meeting, just so we know, I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
I'll do my best.
I misunderstood, I thought you were saying that for the small walls, he doesn't really need, that you didn't think he needed it.
Well, there's a building code requirement for a structural engineer stamp on walls over a certain size, I'm not sure what that size is, but there is a.
Yeah, I think five feet or less would be no problem, but he did mention one that was ten and fourteen feet, so.
Right, so that's why I'm saying five feet or over, we would require it, five feet or less, we would.
But if he's going to have a structural engineer look at them, he can look at them all and say, you know, this is, if, if the structural engineer says it's not required on the smaller ones, you know, we'll have that in writing.
Oh, okay, alright, sure, that's, that sounds good, I defer to the chairman. So the, the recommendation from Graves is that the planning board may wish to include a condition in the decision that requires retaining walls to be designed by a structural engineer prior to construction, but you actually want to see the stamped plans now? Or do you want to just require the stamped plans?
I don't think that engineers will be able to do it in two weeks, so I would say no.
So we can make it a condition?
Condition, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question, is there any way to make it a condition of the vote, that you guys be able to review those plans? The only reason I'm asking is if, if there is a possibility of having a vote taken tonight, we have extreme lead times on the vast majority of these materials, we have investors who have committed money but won't commit money until we can state that we have a planning board vote. We're looking at several months of lead time to get some of these materials in, because of all the shipping issues going on. I'm just not sure if we could make, instance, you know, review, the planning board review of these, a condition of, you know, getting an occupancy permit or something along those lines, to make sure that they meet the Graves Engineering standards. It's just that if we, you know, two weeks may not sound like a long time, but with everything that's going on, it could be a substantial amount of time, we could lose investors that have committed money but won't ultimately transfer it, without us being able to say that a vote was taken in the affirmative, that, I'm just, we're seeing if that's even a possibility.
My rebuttal to that would be that this, this appointment with this meeting was known, that we were meeting again in two weeks, that the structure, the engineer should have been put under pressure to get done in two weeks, I don't think we should have to carry that burden of pressure. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking. Yeah, we, we submitted the revisions the first time around the day after the last meeting. The letter was dated the ninth, which is. Which is, which is when Jeff got it to us.
So there was a letter dated the seventh?
Right.
And then it quickly went through another round?
Either or, we don't have plans.
Yes.
And then, just to clarify things for the next time, I'm still a little bit up in the air about what we're doing with this, with the pumping report.
I would, so there's, there are three sections in, I believe, this last paragraph that was read, that states that prior opening, these three criteria should be ultimately done to the new well, I would assume that the board would like to put those three criteria as a condition prior to final approval, let those be done and the data be brought before the board, which I believe was to do a pump at nine gallons per minute.
And that you can set for the.
Make sure that we saw that there was no, you know, substantial change between the two wells, and then also showed, I think it was a ninety five percent, I don't know the correct verbiage, but I saw ninety five percent was in there.
Yep.
That's going to be the new well, it's going to be drilled.
Hundred percent, I would assume that would be a condition to make sure that we brought that data back to you, once that well was done and that the test was completed.
Because this report really, quite frankly, this report just basically goes off the data.
Which was the same thing Mr. LaFranbois said.
From the existing well, which isn't even going to be the one that's.
A new, a new test would need to be done.
Right.
And as Mr. LaFranbois stated, you know, ultimately we can reach out to all the butters to make sure if they wish to participate, they could participate in the study.
And if I remember correctly, the original pumping plan was done over a period of seventy two hours? Yes.
I think it was a little, was a little bit longer, I think it was a thousand minutes, and then it stopped for six hours, and I believe he said it's.
Ten of the four days or something like that, yeah.
Thousand minutes and seven gallons per minute, there's a lag, and then in all four days.
I would like that to be in the, in the conditions as well, because the first three, the three items in this report from NGI talk about non-pumping, just to kind of wire to the pumping test, it talks about the rate, and it talks about the sufficient water level recovery, but it doesn't talk about the duration of the pumping test, I think we should have that in there as well.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there is a line in here, I'm reading it, after the well pump was replaced, the pumping test was restarted at a rate of five gallons per minute, and pumping continued for an additional four days.
Okay, yeah, so if we could have, whatever, if that three days or four days, whatever happens to be acceptable, it's put into the conditions as long as, as well as the other three that are in the last paragraph?
Of course.
I think that would be cool.
What's the total acreage of the proposed development here?
The whole, the building itself?
No, the whole land area that you're going to.
I think it's like ten, ten point four acres or something like that, I believe.
So my question is, like, if you drill a new well?
Yeah.
And you're not getting enough gallons per minute with the new well, do you have enough acreage that you could drill a second well if you had to?
Oh, yeah, but.
Alright, so just to go over what we were, what we're looking at for conditions on approval, we'd be looking at conditions for the structural engineer reviewing all the retaining walls, we'd be looking at a condition for landscaping, waiving the requirement for the trees in the parking area in lieu of landscaping the project, so that it minimizes the view of the neighbors. And then the third one, the condition we would have would be that the, once the new well is drilled, that the well drilling company would perform the, a similar test like what they did previously, with regards to all the butters, so that they can make sure that they can monitor their wells while they're doing the pump test on the new well, that it doesn't adversely affect any of the butters on the street.
Mr. Chairman, I don't like the language of the butters, because technically, we've only got one abutter, and there were other people here at the last public hearing that had major concerns about.
Okay, so we, I think.
Because we've got town on land between, between this property and the other houses.
How about if we say? Verbiage here is private well owners in the vicinity, vicinity be noted, however many that may be, and it's a limited number anyway.
So private, private well owners at, at the residences, in the vicinity?
And at the last meeting, we talked about putting a condition in on odor, that if there's any releases of odor, the applicant would be responsible for correcting those, those issues immediately.
And I can't think of anything else, and anybody else have any other conditions that they were thinking of?
No.
Okay, so the other condition I think we would put in is we would put for times of construction, it started at seven AM to six PM.
Yeah, it's, you can do five if you want, it's fine.
And.
What was that, Jim?
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
Seven to five, Monday through, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through.
I guess that we could do Saturdays optional, seven to twelve, but it's up to you.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it at the five days. Okay. I can't think of anything else.
Was there any traffic mitigation you wanted to see as part of this, this project?
Well, I think they said that they were, they were open into, you know, putting this proper signage up, the stop signs that they needed, and they were, they also talked about, good thing you brought that up, so the tracking from the vehicles that come off the, off the dirt roadway onto Fish Road.
Yeah.
You were looking at doing something to.
Correct.
And pave an area, I believe, the other gate was it?
Or something, something that would affect, okay.
Did, did you decide on?
We haven't yet, no, there's a couple of different options we're trying to look at.
I think we, we should stipulate that we, you know, we have a feeling that we want either paving or, what's that?
Tracking pad?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like right now, we have a big tracking pad, and we have to keep replenishing it, but.
Right, and that's just like riprap stone or something like that?
Correct.
Oh, no, I'm thinking of, what's that reclaimed asphalt product that they make parking lots out of now?
Oh, Millings?
Millings, asphalt, Millings?
I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, we, we're just trying to limit the amount of dirt that's going to be deposited back on the Fish Road from the, from the project.
Rocks, actually, rocks was what the complaint was, the big tire treads pickup, you know?
Yeah.
And then they throw off.
I can't think of anything else. Yeah, so, if everybody's in agreement, I will go ahead and close the public hearing this evening at.
Can I just get one more question in real quick?
Sure.
Sure.
We talked about possibly the lead times for this two week doing it, being a delay for construction. I'm assuming you have letters of intent already out with different contractors?
So, the gentleman that came here at the last meeting, he's our, what's his exact, kind of the project manager?
Yeah.
So, we've been working with, with the different investors on different greenhouse options. And they've all proposed to us that if we, we can bring to them and say we have a vote, that we can send them a deposit and they'll order these items. The quickest that I was told by Mr. Hendricks was that once that order goes out, it's going to take somewhere between six to eight months.
So, it's for the actual prefabricate, or is it pre-engineered greenhouses?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
One hundred percent. So, that, we'll be able to, they'll, we'll be able to start the process of putting down padding and things along those lines. But ordering the, you know, the actual structures and things along those lines at this point is a six to eight month process.
Right.
And that's just gradually gone longer as we've gone through this process, obviously.
It's the industry right now?
One hundred percent.
Right, right. And there are investors out there with proposals.
My experience in working with pre-engineered buildings, for example, is once you get them a letter of intent, they can hold you a line or a place pretty much in the production cycle. And granted, once it starts to get ready for production, there's a certain amount that's usually due. But you guys should have the letter of intent out and there should be already a place, a placeholder in line for you already. So, the two weeks shouldn't be putting you behind. I mean, it shouldn't be doing.
Well, the deposit's a million dollars. So, it's, I'm not gonna put a million dollar, non-defundable deposit without knowing it's gonna go through as a vote.
I understand.
Yeah.
Now, we have to give the deposit upfront for them. That's what we were told.
Right, but even, I guess what I'm trying to go is trying to, if you have a letter of intent out with somebody, if the letter of intent has been signed already and if they're, they, if you have a place in their production schedule already, that this isn't a, a delay that's going to.
We don't have a letter of intent signed with a manufacturer. We have the proposals and everything ready to go. We have a letter of intent ready to go.
And we, and they asked for, they asked for the deposit upfront.
Right. So, it's one third down.
We have investors that have come in and ultimately said, we will give you this, but we need to know that the town has ultimately voted to move before we transfer money over to you.
I mean, like I said, I'm familiar with the process.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, that's the only reason we do is that we have people lined up and we have everything kind of ready to go. We just can't push start.
That's why we asked if it's possible to vote pending a couple of approvals.
I don't know if it's, to do it with the conditions being that, you know.
We can't, we can't get an occupancy permit pending you fully review the plans or something like that.
All right, so, at, it's eight thirteen PM, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the, on the Fish Road Grove Facility. And we will take up the vote at the next meeting. With the conditions that we outlined with the town earlier today.
Yes.
Gentlemen?
Major.
Yes, why don't we, why don't we jump back to item number two on our agenda that we were out of time on at the beginning. Country Club Acres LLC has a lot merger plan to come before us.
Would you like to see a copy of the plan?
Sure. I think we have one in our book, don't we?
Yeah, I thought it was on there.
Eight and a half by eleven sheet here already.
What tab did you guys find in?
It was in tab C, right behind the A and R checklist. Mr. Clark's gonna recuse himself from this matter because he's in a book.
So, the town assessor requested the applicant to combine the two lots that his project sits on so that she can assign, you know, a map and lot number to each of the structures. And previously, a couple of the structures were divided, you know, split across two lots, which made it difficult for her to assign a lot number. So, she asked if the applicant could prepare this plan, which essentially merges these two lots under his ownership into one lot to make it easier for assessment purposes.
So, my question, looking at this plan, is the area that's in the wet, I would say it's in the wetlands on the other side of the fifty-foot easement, is that area, it says NF James and Linda Ruda, is that still their property or is it all part of this Country Club Acres LLC?
It should all be part of the property under the management of Country Club. I believe he's acquired that, perhaps that note is inaccurate.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out which two, which two plots are being combined.
Yeah, they're not, they're not shown here.
And the plan's worthless.
Because it's been combined into one lot. I could pull it up on screen if you, if you wanna see it.
I'm just trying to figure out which two plots are being combined.
So, this was done back in, this plan was done back in January, it says. But the dotted line where it shows the roadway, I, I drive by there a lot. I think the, I think the roadway is already out to Dudley Hill Road. From what I can see, they placed stones across it so people wouldn't drive down it. But it looks like here, on this plan, the roadway ends before it gets there.
So, this isn't changing any other approval that you've granted for this project? It's really just, you know, a simple lot merger?
So, would you consider this a perimeter plan then?
It's more than that because we're actually combining lots.
Okay.
Perimeter plan is just a survey of existing lot lines.
Okay.
So, where's the second lot that's being combined with the first?
It's all shown as one lot here.
Can you?
Yeah, maybe you should pull that up.
Can you pull that up on the computer or do we need to look at a separate, for a previous approved plan? Do we have our previously approved plan?
Yeah, I could go pull it out if you prefer.
Where it shows the two lots? That might be easier.
Okay.
What I'm assuming is the second lot, when there's an owner showing on it, it's different than the Country Club estate. It's also kind of troubling, isn't it?
It, it's, it's like grayed out, but I mean, I can read it, so that's why I asked if it, if that was part of the plan or not.
Right.
And like I said, I think the road is, maybe the road wasn't all the way down to Dudley Hill Road when, when this plan was drawn back in January, but I think that's, it's there now.
It's been there a long.
Yeah, I thought that.
Been there since the end of last year.
Before Christmas, yeah.
Yeah, last year.
Okay, that's what I thought.
There's huge boulders there that are blocking from accessing it, but people run through there, jog through there on a regular basis.
This isn't the applicant requesting this, right? This is the assessor's actually requesting this. It seems more like a clerical thing for the town assessor to.
Even muddies the water is worse.
I think she wants to give it one, you know, one lot designation and, you know, for book and page purposes.
But if that's the case, shouldn't the assessor be going to the owner of the land and saying, hey, I'd like to have this combined and the owner of the land coming to us?
I think she did, and that's why we have it before us.
I don't know. It looks like what the engineer did is just use one of these old. Would you say the date was on this?
It says one twenty-four twenty-two at the bottom.
Then why?
We get half.
If it's January twenty-fourth, why does it only show the road up to that point?
I, that's what I was saying. I don't know.
That, that, you know, this is.
I think that, that road is done.
This looks like the engineer used an old plan and then.
Well, there should be an application to go along with this, isn't there, or something?
Well, I think because the acreage is not changing, all that's happening is two lots are becoming one lot.
Yeah, but Mr. Parter was doing the opposite and he's got an application. And I think we've had other ones before the board where combined, land is being combined, there's an application. And this is just a plan thrown at us. It doesn't appear to be accurate at all?
Well, this isn't necessarily an A and R lot. This is, this is a subdivision plan that we've already approved. We approved a subdivision plan for two lots and now they want to make a subdivision plan for one lot. They're just removing a lot line in the subdivision plan.
Oh, that makes it a little more easier. All right.
Okay. Because the, the frontage doesn't change. Nothing's changing here. It's just, there's, there was two previously, on the previously approved definitive plan, there was two lots and now there's gonna be just one lot.
I don't recall seeing the back portion in earlier plans. I only remember the houses being along the road.
I don't think in the previous plan, I don't know if that, I don't know if that easement was called out specifically like it is now because it kind of makes it look like it's two pieces.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
I couldn't find it. Let me try to pull it on that screen.
Okay. So, Bill, while you're out, what I was basically explaining to Dan is, I, I think the situation we have here is we have a, we have a definitively approved subdivision plan that had two specific lots that were adjoining. And what, what we're gonna do here is we're gonna remove the boundary line between those two lots and make it a single lot. And it will now become a definitively approved subdivision, but only one lot instead of the two lots that was previous.
Yes, so we're not changing the previous.
Because he was asking why is there no checklist or anything like that, but it's not, it's not an A and R plan. This is just changing the definitive plan from one, from two lots to one lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Correct, yeah.
So, if, if that's the case, if we do this, then doesn't this end up getting recorded with registry of deeds?
It does, yeah.
Okay, so then they're gonna need to fix this, this NF.
Right, if it's not owned by.
The owner's name on here that is incorrect, apparently.
Right, I think I agree.
It's so light, I tend to agree with, I don't know if it was Dan or Guy, but one of you guys said that it's possible that was just an error that was.
I think it was there, I think it was there previously, like Dan said, it was, it was a previously used plan and when they.
Meant to omit it and somehow it.
It got highlighted to a lighter color, but it didn't get removed.
So, am I correct in assuming that if we approve this tonight, what's gonna come before us is gonna be full-size plans in a Mylar that we have to sign?
Right, I have that Mylar now.
Does the Mylar have that name on it?
The intent that you would sign it tonight, but.
Does the Mylar have the name on it that this little plane has?
Yes. That's a problem.
Another thing, I mean, if we've, if we've approved a subdivision, then shouldn't that subdivision be shown on here?
Oh, right there.
They can't see the houses and everything in this.
So, you know, all you need to make this decision is to see the lot line change. That's all that's being the question.
Right, I mean, they can put the lot line in in Phantom or something like that so we know that this is, you know, removing it. Or they can just show us another, another, they can show the lot line in Phantom in a small block in the corner saying.
Right.
Was and this is.
So, when they put that note on, it says now or formerly of. So, sometimes between the time a plan is prepared and when it's, when it's approved, that ownership may change. So, they put now or formerly just to indicate, you know, some, some chain of ownership.
I think I would just, I would, I would just go back to them and ask if they could do, if they could remove that, that previous owner's name from the, from the lot on the other side of the easement. And if they could somewheres in the corner put a, you know, a graphic showing the outline of the entire parcel of property and show where the previous lot line was and that we're removing that lot line to make it a, a single contiguous, contiguous lot. With the exception of the easement, that runs through it.
I have plans here. It's difficult for me to find one that shows the, the lot layout.
I wonder if you look at the GIS map, is it still two plans on the GIS map?
Sure, I could try that. So, let me see where we are here. So, it runs between Airport Road and Dudley Hill Road. So, I believe it's this lot here. So, it looks like it's combining perhaps the house lot, which is shown as a separate lot, perhaps. Or, or maybe it's part of this, might be this, I think it's this lot here.
Yeah, that's that lot.
With the dog leg on it and the, and the other parcel.
And it actually still shows the garage that's torn down.
Right.
Right, this is older data, but I think the lot data is correct.
Okay, yeah. That makes more sense.
All right. So, do you think we could ask, ask the applicant if they could give us a plan that, that shows, that shows what the previous lot lines were?
Okay.
The new lot lines and then just have the previous owner's name removed from the, from the wetlands area.
So, you want the plan to show the previous two lots?
They can do it like, you know how they do like a little square up in the corner with the, with the outline profile? And that, yeah, like the locus and then have the, have the two lots shown there. And then a, a large map like they have here with the single lot, but just have the names of the.
We, we don't already have that? From when they initially came for the subdivision?
Because when it was approved, it was two lots.
Right, so I'm saying that would be the one that we could look at to see the before.
Well, they could, if they put it on the same drawing, this is gonna get filed. It's very clear.
Okay.
You know, why should somebody have to go back and look at a different map?
Oh, well, initially, when we were discussing it, you were, you were saying, or show us the plan that shows.
I think, I think if we, I think if they could do it like a locus in the corner, just showing what it was previously and this is what it's gonna be now. It'll be more.
So, this was the original plan that you proposed for Legacy Landing before Mr. Haynes acquired it. You later approved the modification to all single family.
Right.
But this was the.
There's so many lines there, I don't think you could even tell where the two lots are.
Right, yes, but they are developing in this Dog Lake section that we just spoke about, so.
Right.
That was on a separate, must have, well, it was a separate.
Par, parcel.
Yes.
That's, I think that's, that's an easy solution that we, can we all agree to that?
Agree, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
They could just do a little locus in the corner showing the, the outline shape of the property with the previous property lines for the two different lots. And then just remove the previous owner's name from the, from the new lot. And then I think we can approve it and sign it.
Okay.
Could this, could this be like considered a, it's just a matter, it wouldn't be like. Could this, could this be like considered a, it's just a matter, wouldn't be like, would it even be a minor modification to a definitive plan or?
I don't think so, I mean, you're really not changing the plan at all, it's.
I mean, and they're doing it on behalf of the town, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, so I think we can treat it as just a, like an A and R kind of endorsement.
Okay. Alright, so it's not gonna be any more land or any less land, it's the same amount of land, it's just two pieces put together. Alright, so we're at eight thirty, our next meeting is, our next item on the agenda is scheduled for seven fifty, uh, the shared streets. So. Let's go on to the seven fifty discussion of shared streets and spaces.
Next Chairman, we could postpone that if you wanna deal with, that is where there were people in attendance.
Okay, so the next item we have was scheduled for eight o'clock, meeting with residents of Misty Meadows to discuss completing of the subdivision. So do we have anybody from Misty Meadows here? Come up please.
My name is Derek Donahue and this is my wife Nadine Donahue, we reside at number five Misty Meadow Lane, obviously in Dudley. Um, thank you for having us today for this discussion, we appreciate it. We're here mainly to discuss the Betterment Program, especially with respect to the covenant that was in place with the builder, uh, prior to, um, the completion of the, of the builds. And also with respect to the, our deed and the escrow accounts that were, that were set up for this particular property. So, we realize that the Betterment Program is an option that is there to complete these roads that obviously are, are not completed, obviously. And, um, so, but we have just such concerns about the fact that this road and again the covenant that was put in place, um, in our opinion, let me back up a bit. Especially as it comes to the covenant, you know, the covenant agreement was pulled back in two thousand and seven with our, with our builder. Two thousand and six, yeah, excuse me, Michael Schulz. One of the lines on that was the fact that, you know, the, for line item number two, uh, any lot or section of lots may be released from this covenant by the planning board on receipt of bond or cash and if a security is acceptable to the planning board in the amount sufficient to secure the performance of the construction of ways and the installation of municipal utilities required for said lots or section of lots. It is hereby in agreed upon completion and approval of work by the town engineer and approval of the planning board uh, on the Form H, which, uh, we have not been able to track down.
To locate that is associated with this covenant.
Right.
Typically, typically was responsible of the, uh, typically it was the responsibility of the developer to keep the Form H up to date.
Yes, okay.
He would, he would have itemized the lists, on, on the Form H, he would have itemized the items that he was doing and then he would have had, he would have called for an inspection from the town, from the town engineer.
We don't know if it exists or not, I, I.
Right.
I cannot.
I mean, if it was never, if it was never given, if it was never, if the, if the developer never gave it to the town, then we don't have it.
Was that to be done with each lot release? At what point is, so we have a lot of questions that we don't know if you guys have the answers to, but we didn't know where to start. And thank you, um, Mr. Scanlon, um, for trying to answer many of my questions that you were trying to explain procedures but didn't actually have answers to my direct questions regarding these, uh, legal documents that were in place. So, my question is, this Form H, which I couldn't locate at all, I, I found the one with, um, Mr. Durand who, uh, Mr. Schulz took over, um, the development that, that wasn't finished under Mr. Durand. And then I found partial, a partial one, um, for Mr. Durand, but none for Mr. Schulz with this covenant. So, at what point does that Form H get filled out? At what, at what point in this process?
So, if you're, if you're, if you're building a subdivision and you wanna have a lot release and that lot has a hundred feet of frontage on the road, you would have to build the hundred feet of frontage of the road in front of that lot. And that hundred feet of frontage would be brought up to some specification that, that designed in our, in our subdivision control rules and regulations, it tells you what, what the design specs have to be for the road. That goes into the subdivision, um, definitive plan, I don't know when this one was, I'm sure it was way before my time, but it's.
In, um, I believe it was in two thousand and six.
Okay.
Two thousand and five, maybe.
The road was actually put in eighty-five, eighty-six.
The road was already there, the road was already in place, um, there was already a base coat of pavement, the, the municipalities were already all there. So, many of the, so it, it had stated that, um, what was required of him was only steps six through thirteen on Form H. On the covenant.
I don't believe our Form H has changed, so we could look at.
It's the same form, I believe it's.
Yeah, so we can look at step six through H and see what that is.
Um, so I happened to have it in front of me, thank you Bill for getting me that. So, there was, I mean, not only a gravel base, but there was the, the binder course, um, drainage, street signs. Um, there are waivers, he did not have to do, um, streetlights as long as he put in lamp posts for all of us and he did. Um, no berms were required according to the covenant, um, and no sidewalks were required. So therefore, no grass strips either, correct?
A basic road.
So that, that's all part of this covenant, but, um.
But the big question is, is one of the, uh, one of the requirements was him before releasing those first few lots was a thirty thousand dollar.
It says the board shall release lots one and two once there was a thirty thousand dollar cash deposit. And then lots three, four and five would be released with another ten thousand dollar. So, I, I, I have a copy of the, of the transactions of the passbook for this escrow that still exists. Um, and I, I don't know how these lots were released without this.
That thirty thousand dollars unless there was some waiver of that as well, but.
So, that's one question that I have.
I don't know if there was a revised agreement, but it turned out that there was required, uh, lot release fee of three thousand dollars per lot. And so we did receive for those five lots fifteen thousand dollars. I, I can't explain why we didn't get the initial deposit that was specified in the covenant, but we did get some lot release fees.
Why would the, why would the planning board ever change that to three thousand dollars only? Why?
It's a good question.
It's not the way we do it today, it's, I, I don't think it was the right way to go about it.
Was the, um.
So.
You're saying it was changed from thirty thousand to three thousand?
And he did.
I don't have anything.
Forty thousand, he did deposit three thousand dollars for all six lots that, that, this, part of this subdivision that he took over from Mr. Durand. He did deposit, um.
For what?
Eighteen thousand dollars.
That's what he deposited.
Okay.
That, that's what the planning board at the time, I think was under Nancy Runkel, um, needed the highway superintendent who was, I think, Mr. Dion. Dion?
Dion.
Um, there was communication that I saw, um, some communication in that binder that I spent three hours reading through, um, that Nancy Runk- Runkel, um, with the deposit, the three thousand dollar deposit and the highway superintendent going through to inspect the road to make sure that it was still intact before they could release the next lot to be built.
And again, to reiterate, the road had already been there since eighty-five, eighty-six.
Yeah, the, the road went in under a developer back in the eighties who then, you know, um, filed bankruptcy. Then, uh, Mr. Durand took it over and then, um, sounded like the town had issues with this Mr. Durand. And then finally, um, our builder took it over.
So is there, can I ask, is there any money left in the escrow account now?
Yes, so I've got a lot of questions to ask, but, um, my question is, is, um, and I've, I've been spending an awful lot of time I'm reading more about this than I ever wanted to know. Um, it says here in, in number five, so for the, for the, um, for the town or, or the planning department, um, planning board to, um, hold up their end of this agreement stated that if our builder, if the, um, the builder, um, defaulted in any, you know, way, shape or form on this covenant agreement, that the, um, that the town of Dudley would take action and place liens on the developer's, uh, property wherever it may be located. I don't see where any liens, when I look in the registry of deeds, that the town followed through to make sure that this builder didn't walk away, I don't, I don't see that. So that was, that was the planning board's portion responsibility of this.
Lien's on, say that again.
Do you, do you want me to, do you want me to read this whole paragraph? I can.
No, place liens on the, on the developer's property.
Property wherever it may be located.
Okay, well, he didn't own the lots anymore cause the houses were already built and people taught them.
Right, yeah, but any property wherever it may be, it wasn't, wasn't exclusive to this property apparently.
So how, did that developer go bankrupt?
Not until tw- uh, chap, uh, he filed bankruptcy in two thousand and thirteen, long after he was done. So, that's my question, there was plenty of time to place liens on and he had much personal property at the time. So my next question regarding.
Do we have a copy of whatever document that you're reading from?
This is at the registry of deeds, yeah, and you also have a copy of it.
It's your covenant.
Who was, who was, who signed on that, who signed that covenant?
It's in the, it's in the Misty Meadows binder.
No, I didn't, I don't have.
I printed this from the registry of deeds, but you also have a copy of it in your binder, in the Misty Meadows binder.
Who was on the board at the time and who signed off on it?
Sure can. At the time that this was signed, because the, the planning board members changed in that six-year time period that Mike Schulz, um, was responsible for this covenant. Um, the, they were, I'm, hold on, because I have the definitive plan, um, at the time of the notice of decision certificate of approval modification to approved subdivision plan was, uh, Mr. Sullivan, um, Guy Horn, John Murphy, Margaret Bacon, Christopher Daggett and Nancy Runkel was the town planner. I don't, I dealt with her in two thousand and ten when we were looking to enter into an agreement with Mr. Schulz. Um, so I know that she was with Mr. Schulz, you know, as a town planner at the start of this covenant and I don't know how long after two thousand and ten.
So what you just read to me was, it was, what, and my name was on there, so I do, I do remember that, but I, I wasn't remembering what you were talking about on this other paper. So, what you just read to me was we modified an existing subdivision.
Yep, yes, you had to because the zoning laws changed. It was an original subdivision of something in the area of ten to twelve or maybe more lots, but the zoning had changed in the nineteen nineties that now this was a zone eighty-seven or whatever you call it, where it had to be minimum of two acre lots. So Mike Schulz wanted to take this over, he agreed to work with the town and change those lots to minimum of two acre lots. With the exception of Six Overlook Drive, which was only one acre but was somehow grandfathered.
Okay, so now what you're reading me on the covenant, was that the covenant from the, from the reorganization?
Yeah, yeah, this is the covenant.
But there's no signatures on that covenant?
Oh, oh yeah.
Yeah.
You want the signatures?
Yeah, who signed that one?
Yep.
You.
Okay.
Um, Sullivan, Horn, Murphy, Daggett.
So the same, the same people that signed the definitive plan?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is that one that you just read is the newest covenant for the subdivision?
Under Mike Schulz?
Under Mike Schulz, yeah.
Would there be another one?
I don't know.
For Misty Meadow Estates?
I believe that's, that's the latest.
That's the latest, okay. So what is the, and under that covenant, you're saying there was supposed to be forty thousand dollars collected?
So it says, before any lots were released, before lots one and two could be released, there had to be a thirty thousand dollar cash. So instead of, I guess, in place of a bond, he was expected to deposit thirty thousand dollars cash. And then another ten thousand before the release of lots three, four and five.
Okay, and that somehow changed to the three thousand dollars per lot?
Wait a minute. First Chairman, first thing we need to do is we need to ask the treasurer, who keeps track of every dime that comes into the town's coffers, whether or not, A, any money came in and B, how much it was.
It's not in the passbook.
It's not, yeah. But we don't know, passbook for an account, correct?
Sorry?
Passbook for an account?
For the escrow.
Yeah, for, for, for Misty Meadow.
But we don't know where that money came from, we don't know if it was intended to come from that account.
Well, it came from the sale of each of the homes, of each of the properties.
You're talking about the three thousand dollars per lot?
Any monies, any monies that came in.
Wouldn't it have been?
Regarding that agreement, any money that came to the town, just because you can't show it coming out of that account doesn't mean the money didn't come from somewhere else into that account.
Are you saying that there could have been another passbook? Is this what you're saying?
I'm saying there could have been another account, could have been.
I, I've asked, um, through records request.
So the other thing that could have.
For the passbook for Misty Meadow.
The other thing that could have happened is that, that money that you're talking about for the release of the lots, that could have been tied to, we could have had an estimate done by our consultant town engineer at the time on the roadways and the infrastructure that went with those lots. And he could have given us an estimate that, you know, in front of these three lots, thirty thousand dollars is necessary to fix the road and do all the improvements and upgrades so that these are now sellable lots. If the contractor went out and did those improvements, there would have been no reason for him to give us the money for us to do it.
The road was already in place, I mean.
It's bound by the, it's not, you're not bound by this covenant that says you have to, I mean, it's a con, it's essentially a contract, correct?
I don't know, they expire at some time.
Well, yeah, and the, it did expire and it, and, and, uh, there was also a, um, what do you call it, an extension of this, also that was filed.
And what, and what did the extension say?
It just simply said extending this covenant to, to another date and I, I don't have that with me. So, um, my question is, um, you know, aside from this dollar amount, um, where is it that the planning board held this builder responsible to protect the town and to protect these future citizens of this road? Where's the liens to help protect us to make sure that these things were put in place?
Right, because our concern lies with the fact that this Betterment Program certainly has no issue putting liens on our properties.
And so, and, and furthermore, number twelve of this covenant states that, um, the developer hereby agrees upon completion of the ways and municipal utilities in accordance with the approved definitive plan, developer shall forthwith make application to the planning board and the town of Dudley for acceptance of said streets and utilities. Said application shall include an as-built layout and acceptance plan and roadway easement deed with appropriate legal description. Failure for, by the developer to comply with these regulations shall be cause for the planning board to utilize any and all lot release funds and secure such compliance or, or to obtain such materials. So if the town only asked for three thousand dollars per lot and he didn't hold up his end of his bargain, you, you guys had, you guys had your money to then complete this road.
How much is in the escrow account now?
So right now, and this is a whole other issue, and I know, Bill, you, you didn't have an answer for me. There was at one time with interest somewhere, um, so, so that eighteen thousand plus with interest, it was nineteen thousand something, I can pull it up, I asked the, um.
It's about eleven thousand plus in there at the moment.
Eleven thousand.
So, my, my, my question was, when I had asked for that passbook and the transactions, a couple of things. First of all, um, in that binder, it showed a two thousand dollar deposit which was required of Mr. Schulz um, to begin like engineering, it was like engineering fees, and there is a receipt in that binder up there for two thousand dollars.
voucher.
It, I don't know, it says that there was a deposit and I asked today the, um, the town accountant, where is this money? Cause it's not in the, it's not, it's not in the escrow.
So, so, well, Bill, you're saying there's eleven thousand in the account and you're saying there's nineteen thousand in the account?
So what happened was, um, there were two withdrawals, one in.
I did find some information on that today, which I haven't had a.
I did find some information on that today, which I haven't had a chance to share with you yet.
Okay.
But, so, um, there were, in twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, there were two charges drawn on that account.
Large.
Which Nadine is, is questioning, what were they for?
Well, I know what they were for. I was wondering.
That Bill talked.
How, how the authority.
Right.
How is the authority to withdraw from that account?
The minutes of the planning board meetings, and I found, uh, were the planning board approved those, uh, requests from the highway superintendent. So on, um, October fourteenth, twenty fifteen, uh, the minutes read, um, Mr. Horn received an email from Mr. Valucronis, who was the former town administrator, regarding Misty Meadow Lane. Two catch basins on the road are sinking, and Mr. Gian would like to use the funds left in escrow to hire a company to repair the two catch basins before winter. Mrs. Wagner moved to allow Highway Superintendent Gian to use the escrow fund to hire a local contractor to repair the two catch basins on Misty Meadow Lane. Mr. Holt seconded and unanimous. So that was one time where the escrow was dipped into. The other time was on August ninth, twenty seventeen, uh, the minutes read, uh, Dan, um, Highway Superintendent Dan Gian informed Mr. Johnson, who was the former town planner, that in Misty Meadows, there was a manhole that is out of place, and there was a hole in the pavement that should be repaired. There was thirteen thousand dollars in the fund that could be used to do that work. Mrs. Humphrey made a motion that we access the left, the leftover money from Misty Meadow account to repair a manhole, a manhole cover that is not in place. Mr. Sullivan seconded unanimous through your vote, so.
Thank you. So, um, question for you for how, how this all, um, I guess was, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, like allowed to happen. Because the last couple of years, we have asked, um, Mr. Ruda if the, at the time, very small potholes on Misty Meadow Lane.
Small, yeah.
Small at the time, could be fixed by the money in that escrow. And he said, we cannot touch the money in that escrow to do repairs on private road. I spoke with Highway Superintendent last fall and asked the same question, separate from the discussion with Mr. Ruda. Mr., uh, Jeff, I don't know what his last name is, Highway Superintendent, said that, that money is, we, we, they cannot do repairs on a private road because it is a liability to the town. So I looked at the town bylaws, and sure enough, it said that no repairs can be done on a private road unless petition is brought forth to the Board of Selectmen for approval. So how is it that we're told that money can't be touched to fix the potholes in the road?
I think you'll, if you read that minutes that he just told you, both times we voted to have the money taken out of the escrow account to fix the road. It wasn't done by the town of Dudley, it was done by a private contractor. We had to hire a private contractor to fix, to fix a safety issue.
It's a private road, how did you, did you have to petition?
You cannot do repairs to.
But it came out of the funds for that private road.
We were told those funds can't be touched.
Not, but, not for the town to fix the road, the town, it's not the town's responsibility. So, the town, the highway department came to us and said that there was two major deficiencies in the road, catch basins and manhole covers that needed to be fixed before somebody got hurt.
We've been saying somebody's going to get hurt with these potholes.
These potholes are ridiculous.
I think.
So how, how is it a liability to fix the potholes, but not a liability?
The, uh, chairman is trying to make is that when you went to the town administrator and asked them to fix the potholes on the road, he was explaining that the town can't be the ones to fix that.
Well, no, no, no.
Told the funds can't be touched.
Funds can't be touched and used and by the highway department of the town to fix the road.
I don't care how, I don't care who fixed them, we were just asking for them to be fixed. They're, they're now like.
There's a legal distinction is what we're getting at.
And this was a result of the initial letters a year or more ago about the betterment program that came from Mr. Ruda. So we reached out to Mr. Ruda to say, what is, what are the funds available? He researched, he researched it. He actually consulted, I believe, town council, who advised him that
To not touch the funds.
The town was not supposed to touch the road. The all, the, he actually said the escrow money is meant or intended for the full completion of that road, not repairs. That's what I was told.
Yeah, I believe at the time, question was if you use, you know, a little bit here to fix something, and then the next year use that money to spend on something else, you'd completely.
You know, and I, I certainly understand that perhaps the planning board was exercising their right under this covenant, right? Because it said so in number twelve. But I, 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 what I don't understand is how can the town or the planning board exercise part of their covenant, but not all of it, right?
I mean, as far as I know, that covenant's expired.
Yes, probably. It's usually for two years. I think it was renewed once.
Yeah.
I, I'm not asking about whether it's still current or not, because it, it expired by twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, right?
And when were those based on?
Twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen.
Right.
Obviously, this covenant was long expired by then. The, the builder filed bankruptcy in twenty thirteen.
And the petition had to go in front of the Board of Selectmen, you just said it went down, right? So I mean, it doesn't matter whether or not it came before this board.
Yep.
And it, and the bylaws say it had to be done by the abutters of the road.
Yeah, right.
But, but the, back, back then, the, the new, the new town bylaw that there is for betterments of roads didn't exist when any of this was going on. That's, this is a very new, recent thing that just happened. It was, it was developed to try to fix some of the problems from the past. I mean, you're not the only one in this situation. We have a whole list of subdivisions that are not finished.
I know.
Uh, but I do see that there's someone else in the audience that would like to speak. I'm going to ask her if she could come up and have.
I, I did have, um, another question though regarding.
You can, you can still talk, but I'm going to.
Betterment process in two thousand fourteen, doesn't it, I think, related to the bylaws?
I'm not sure about that.
Uh, my name's Joanne Simzak. I kind of go back a ways in the town, and part of what's happening here is things are being out of context and chain of command, as to who handles different things in town government. Part of your subdivision control laws also gave you direction as to a procedure should someone violate them, what options you would have for recourse to them. The covenant is a promise to do some things. So without having an attorney interpret for us what came under subdivision control laws that may have allowed the planning board to refer it to the selectmen for further action or to be able to access that money, it may have gone through the selectmen because they control the, the highway department. So when you pull everything out separately, you look at it through tunnel vision instead of looking at a whole picture of how things interact. The planning board was not the sole party responsible for the enforcement of that covenant. They were responsible for subdivision, and when they have issues, they may have referred it to town council, who may have directed it back to the selectmen because it came under the highway superintendent. It may have been a violation of the road conditions through the subdivision control, and that may have led to some of the work being able to be authorized to be done. When you talk about a person promising, when you have under the covenants that you can go after someone personally for when they violate that covenant, we all know people have millions of little LLCs at that time. I go back to the original, I know who did the original subdivision. They went bankrupt. So Misty Meadows goes back to the eighties. So it moved from one party to another party, and then builders tend to protect themselves for liability issues. If you're going to try and interpret all of these things through legal aspects, you need a little more guidance, maybe through the selectmen, through town council, if you're going to try and get research, because you're taking them all individually, and individually you think they make sense, but collectively they don't.
I'm not pretending that this makes sense.
Well, it does make sense if you understand subdivision control laws, if you understand the purpose of what a covenant is, and if you understand who has the authority. They're not the authorities over roads. The selectmen are the authorities over roads. The highway superintendent comes under them, he tells them what kind of repairs can be done. It goes through a whole chain. So what you're looking at, we go back to a time when covenants were just a promise. It didn't even have the ability to have money to substantiate it. From the time this came about, they were allowed to get passbooks, hold passbooks, or post a bond. So there was some chain of command, but when some of those emergency situations may have come up, the people who live there had safety issues within that subdivision, it may have gone back to the planning board to look at it, that it's a violation of what they promised to do with the roads, which then creates another chain that goes another direction. And it's not that anybody's sidestepping, it's that everybody has a different function, and nobody can overlap on another. And even Mr. Ruda is not the overseer of the selectmen, nor the highway department. The selectmen begin an authority, so he may not have followed the chain of research that you followed to go back to some of this. And our records are a little ambiguous because we built a town hall, we moved records from one place to another, things got shifted, and you've got a few weak areas. But you're in the process of trying, the, the selectmen are trying to create a process to fix your road, but they are tied.
They're trying to put that.
They're tied, again, through a chain of command of what they have to do in order to be able to get a road fixed. That's why they came up with a proposal through Mr. Ruda to look at trying to solve your problem, because you can't go back and undo what's done. It won't happen. We have subdivisions. We have one on Dresser Hill where the builder hit the road after putting in twenty-five houses, and the town got to pick up the cost of the road, because covenants were different back then. So each subdivision through the years, planning boards have gotten tougher on the requirements they were able to put on developers to come into our town, so we didn't get stuck with putting in roads from people who left in bad times, took their money and left.
You understand this is the third developer of this division?
I can, I can name them.
Third developer, like you would think by the third developer, things would have been in place.
That they weren't in place, we didn't have subdivision control laws until the late seventies when central mass regional planning came in and assisted the town of Dudley with coming up with subdivision control laws. And they were essential because your planning boards were volunteers. They did not have the expertise that we had. So many hours, we got through central mass planning, and they came in and helped this town with zoning and subdivision control law. It used to be even worse. It has gotten better over the years, just listening to what they did at the beginning of the meeting, the authority they have now to make requirements over things that happen in the town. They didn't exist in two thousand and seven. You've been through a whole series of changes with subdivision control. So you're, it, it's an evolving, and we keep learning through tough lessons. And they're expensive lessons, and they're expensive lessons that.
Expensive for who?
Yeah, but they're expensive on us.
They're, they're, it's an expense of us who live on this road.
Of course it is.
That's not right. It is not right.
It is a.
And you know, and when I look at, when I look at my deed, and I look at all the deeds of my neighbors, um, nowhere on my deed does it say that I own halfway into the road. I had my property surveyed in twenty fourteen, I have it with me. Clearly does not show that I own the road. I do not own the road. I don't even know how I can legally petition to the town to ask for this betterment program. I do not own this road. This road is, is not exclusive, is not exclusive to the residents of this road. There are more people who drive on this road than live on this road. It is used heavily by the town of Oxford, heavily.
Got their buses come through and turn around and go up overlook and make a, make a.
Well, now they go straight down Misty Meadow.
Yeah, now they, yeah, now they drive the entirety of Misty Meadow.
Our, our area of town is used as a cut through, a turnaround to go back into Oxford. It's used as a detour when, when Dudley Oxford Road is not passable. Um, this road is not exclusive to us. It is not like Tobin, it is not like Pierpot, it is not like, uh, Patrick Hill Road, where only the people driving on that road essentially live on that road.
And the irony.
We, we are, we are, uh, six lots that the town is going to ask us to, to pay how much for a half-mile stretch of road?
Probably a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I, I mean, what are we talking? Like ballpark?
And then you're going to add two percent on top of that?
And you're going to make money, you're going to make money off of us, two percent on top of that? On an era that the town made? How is this right? Could somebody please explain this?
And the irony is, I've said in the past, well, this pothole, these potholes are so bad that somebody or some property is going to get injured. So I should be able to, if it's a private road, go out there and put a barrier. And people say, no, you can't put a barrier.
The town, last town meeting, when we talked about this, that we can't block it.
And I can play who's on first with this all day. It's not a public road, so I should be able to block it.
You said the town of Oxford's school buses are driving on this road?
Oxford comes through, now they drive the entirety of Misty Meadow Lane, their postal service comes through.
They used to plow it until the last Board of Selectmen meeting in November, when we brought it to the, the town's attention, and the two highway superintendents talked to each other. So now instead of them coming down Henry Marsh in Oxford, down overlook, and then taking a right onto Misty Meadow, back into Misty Meadow, Oxford, same road names in both towns. Um, now what they do is they come down Misty Meadow and Oxford, lift their plow up, drive over the fifty thousand pound trucks, drive over those potholes, do a U-turn, do a three-point turn onto overlook, back up, drive back over those potholes, lower their plow, and continue to plow into Oxford.
Yeah. So now you've got a hundred-foot stretch now, which is essentially useless, or you can't get through. So if there's an emergency, and now those, again, those buses, Oxford's buses.
Still driving over them, that the Oxford post office. It's heavily used by Oxford as a turnaround, right? If you think about, you know, like a, like a cul-de-sac, right? It's used as a turnaround.
And there's only six houses in Dudley.
Sorry?
There's only six houses in the, in the Dudley portion of the road.
Well, if, if you include the addresses on Henry Marsh that, um, have frontage, there's a total of ten.
Well, we're including overlook as part of this whole.
Yeah, overlook is an extension kind of this Misty Meadow that connects you back.
When did you purchase your property?
Two thousand and eleven, November of two thousand and eleven.
And what was your understanding with regards to the condition of the road and the acceptance of the road?
The road was.
No, the acceptance, what was your?
Our understanding was that money was contributed after each sale, and then when he was done, he was going to turn it over to the town to be finished.
We understood, and we understood at the time that we purchased our property that, and, and again, our deed does not say that we own halfway into the road, that, um, that the builder was under a legal agreement with the town to finish the road. That's what we knew. So it's, it's kind of, you know, when people say, well, you, you bought a house knowing it was on a private road. No, I bought a house knowing that the town and the builder had an agreement to finish the road. That's how I bought my, I didn't own the land before my, my builder built our house.
He had no interest in owning a road, and the idea that we own out halfway is to us ludicrous.
Because we don't. And as a matter of fact, there's communication from the town when it was owned by Durant, um, by, um, the planning board to an attorney, Elaine Lucas, but this was when it was under Durant. But still, th- this property was purchased from Schultz. You know, there's a, there's a deed transaction between Schultz and Durant to purchase land. And there was a question from, um, the attorney, said, um, as far as the deeds to the lots go to the center of the road, it is my belief they do not. The deeds for the lots. Now, they weren't developed yet, obviously, under Durant, he never, he never developed these lots. But if this is what was in place when then Schultz built, and, and none of our deeds say that we own halfway into the road. My, my survey, who used the town registry of deeds, right, to do our survey, we do not own halfway into the road. So, you know, when, when I look at this covenant, and I understand that it is expired, but you know, if I don't pay my mortgage, right, what happens? The mortgage company is going to take over my house, and they're going to absorb that loss. And I think that is the case with this covenant. The town needs to just accept that this road, they had an agreement with the builder. If my, if mine, if my, just because I'm an abutter of the road, it's, it's fully open, it is not exclusive, we cannot block it off. Anybody from any town, from any location can drive on it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is way beyond the scope of the power of this planning board. As Mrs. Simzak has already pointed out.
Probably.
At this point, we should be referring them back to the selectmen if they want to have.
I was asked to start with you guys.
The, it's. And Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think the only thing that I'm aware of in the town bylaws is the betterment process.
Exactly.
I don't know what else you have in mind, but in terms of what exists right now, that is it. I think it's, uh, section two fifty-seven, twenty and twenty-one, and I would refer you to that. And that, it's frontage, and it's fifty-plus percent. I don't know what your abutters or the folks on that road are inclined to do, or what their thoughts might be. I understand, I understand, is it initial ca- I mean, that number's going to shock someone. Uh, you're going to get some commas and some decimal points in there that are going to be very uncomfortable. But it also can extend over. But it also can extend over twenty-five years. It doesn't have, you don't have to.
I don't care, I don't care if it's.
A two percent profit to the town.
The funding upfront would be by the town and the payback would be over twenty-five years, up to twenty-five years.
Why are we being penalized for something?
For something that could have been potentially prevented if the covenant would have been upheld.
The problem is it wasn't prevented and that covenant is now expired.
And the, the legal, um, opinions you're reading to me from Brackett and Lucas, we no longer have them as town council. I believe they're out of business, I'm not sure. But we have, uh, Culpmen and Page and.
I think Mr. Brackett's passed away, hasn't he?
I think he has. And, I mean, things change. I mean, I remember when I first started on the planning board in two thousand and one, back in those, those days, what you're saying is what the, what the town council used to say to us. If you're living on a road and it's unfinished, you own to the middle of the road. But I think after that, after some period of time, that, that's not the case anymore. And I don't know what the situation, you know, I'm not an attorney, as you said, or some, maybe the town planner pointed out, we're all volunteers here. I mean, I'm the only person on the board today that was on the board then. And, you know, at the time, we did what we, what we could. I mean, I remember when I first started that Mr. Durant was in default. Mr. Shoold came along and said, I would like to build some houses here, I'll fix the road. And he did. The problem is now that, you know, that, that situation is, there was a bankruptcy involved there and the situation now is, the road has fallen into disrepair. There was, what you said, eighteen thousand dollars, some of it was removed to fix major problems that popped up and that needed to be addressed and that was told to us as a planning board from our town highway superintendent. So we did, all we could do at the time was to repair the road with a third party because the town can't do it, so we had to hire a third party with the escrow account to make those two repairs. The problem you have right, facing you right now is the longer you wait to, to try to fix this problem, it could get to the point where you have to replace everything and then it's an astronomical account.
Well, that's where we're at right now.
It's the same situ, it's the same situation with Tobin Farms. They're in a good point right now, but if they don't take action now, Tobin Farms have been waiting twenty years to get their road accepted.
And how many houses are part of Tobin Farms?
I believe it's forty-three.
Yeah, to six?
Okay. But I mean, you don't.
You're talking about the realities and we're trying to give you the realities of there's no, there's no one on this board or collectively this board has no power to authorize one cent of town money to be spent to fix your road. No matter what you tell us, no matter what you dig up and what you show us, we don't have the power to do it. So I understand that you're angry and you wanna vent, but I'm trying to let you know that all of this time we just spent here.
Right.
Is gonna result in nothing.
Probably. This is where I was told to start, so I'm sorry to have wasted your time.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, at this point, we gotta refer you to the, the Board of Selectmen.
Unless, like, what happened in the past happens again. If there's, if there's a catch basin that's collapsing or a manhole that's open and it needs to be repaired before somebody gets killed, I mean, a pothole is a pothole, people have to drive around them, but if a, if a manhole is opening up or there's a collapsed catch basin that, you know, if a bus ran over it, it could collapse and somebody could get really hurt, then they could come back, they could come back to the town, the top, hi, the highway superintendent could go through the town and look at that and say that, that's has to be fixed, then whatever's left in the account, eleven or twelve thousand dollars could be tapped again to make that emergency repair. But I mean, if that keeps happening, there's gonna be no money left in the account and the road's gonna still be in disrepair. So whether there, I mean, this is a small subdivision, I understand there's only six houses. I bought, I, I, the reason I'm on the planning board in the town of Dudley is I bought a house in Dudley on a road with six houses. And when I bought my house, the house, the road was in the wrong place. And I had to do everything you're doing and learn all the rules and regulations to try to get the road put in the right place because it was not in the right place. And that's how I got on the planning board. And I had to take it upon myself to do that. And, I mean, I, I, I feel sympathy for you, but, I mean, it's, it is what it is. And I mean, right now, the only vehicle, as Mr. Clark has just said, the only vehicle that there is right now in play in the town is this betterment way, fee.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more thought. Aren't you the least bit curious what the cost would be to bring your road up to the standard that would allow it to be accepted and solve all your problems? Aren't you at least, the least bit curious what that number would be?
When I opened up the conversation with Mr. Ruda about a year and a half ago, I believe he reached out to somebody, might have been the highway department, somebody, and, and he got a back of the envelope calculation that it would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, why go with a back of the envelope com, uh, calculation? Why not avail yourself of the opportunity of the betterment program, start the process, get the petition, and get an engineer that will actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but isn't the process that if they get the petitions, they get the signatures, over fifty percent of the frontage on the street?
Mm-hmm.
That starts the process, then the engineer goes out, figures out what's gonna be required, works with the highway superintendent, what he's gonna expect the standard of the road to be, brought up to, and they get a number. And then they come back to you with the number and they say, this is how much it's gonna be? You could spread this out over X amount of years, up to twenty-five years? This is what it's gonna cost you on your real estate bill for the next twenty-five years if you choose to go forward with it?
Mr. Wachover, there's one point of information there. Uh, the way the bylaw reads, the estimate's supposed to come from the highway commissioner.
I thought it was an engineer.
No, it's, it specifically says the highway commissioner. Uh, he may be working in conjunction with an engineer and I suspect he might have the engineer do the work.
And I think that's what's happening like right now in Tobin Farm.
And the highway commissioner would validate that or something to that effect perhaps. But the highway commissioner is the only one stated specifically in the ordinance.
Right. But the point being is, you, you really should find out because.
The point is, is that this road isn't exclusive to us. If I lived in a development like Tobin or Pierpont or one of those types of situations.
We're not talking about repairing the part on the Oxford side. That, it's not like they're gonna fix the Oxford side and you're gonna pay for that.
No, no, this is, this is purely on the Dudley side.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
Oxford's not paying for that.
And once, once, once the Dudley side gets fixed and accepted, it's, it's out of your hands. It's now the town's.
Right, but it's, it's, it's an investment, so to speak, um, out of our pockets for a majority of other people besides the residents of this road.
A bitter pill to swallow, I agree.
Right, so.
I'm just letting you know, again.
I understand, I totally.
The only option we know of, that two percent increase.
I understand. Two percent profit to the town.
Let me, let me ask you, at your, at your current home, do you have, do you have, um, private water and sewer?
Yes.
Do you have, you, you have private water and sewer?
We all do.
Okay, so in the town of Dudley, when I, when I moved here, I looked at a lot of used homes. And there was a lot of used homes that had betterments on them because water and sewer was extended to these homes.
Oh, I, I understand that, that happened to my parents in Webster.
It's pretty much the same situation. I mean, you can't, if you're six people living on a road.
It's not, please don't say, it's the same situation.
I realize this expired, but somebody in town was supposed to follow up on that covenant.
Again, we can't go back and fix it.
I realize you can't go back, but, you know, we're being penalized for somebody not being doing their job.
We're not third party to this. We're not third party to this.
I mean, yeah.
Again, you have to go back to process, I, you're missing one thing. It's not any one person dropped the ball. It's a process that had to be followed and you're caught in the end of that, the bottom line.
But if I, if I don't pay my real estate tax, right, Rich Carminiani isn't gonna let me get very far, will he?
The place will own your property.
Right? So, I mean, come on, there are things that are in place. I mean, we, we, this, this neighborhood is wonderful. They're all wonderful people, they, they pay their taxes, they're law-abiding citizens. If, if Mike Shoold didn't develop this area, uh, there's been incredible tax revenue, um, with these five, six houses, whatever, that were built, um, that he took over this mess that the town would not have right now. I, I might, you know, ourselves, we've paid over probably sixty thousand dollars in real estate tax in the last ten years, never mind whatever anybody else has contributed in that development. So.
That's money that would never have reached the town.
You're missing one other thing here. You are not just about the developments that have these issues, it is about private roads that are the issues with this selectmen addressing through this program, that those people are in the same danger as you, that those roads will not be maintained anymore. Those people on Norman Lane is one of them, there are several of them throughout the town that, uh, all have, probably where Kruger Lane is or that street up in that area, Bicapon Road. The town maintained private roads for a lot of years and now they have to face the responsibility that equipment keeps breaking. They need to address it and they're looking to address it through the program. Dudley's not the only town, the city of Worcester did the same thing with private roads. And that's how they need to address some of it. It's not gonna go away. I appreciate what you're saying on your research, but again, some of the research is out of a little bit of context for where it finally lands. And when you talk roads, these are wonderful people who give their time, but they are not the people who oversee the roads in the town of Dudley. That comes under your selectmen through the highway department. So you're back to that board. And you're, you're adamant, you're good, you're paying attention, try and get on a committee to solve the problem and move it forward.
I know more than I ever wanted to know.
I remember when towns, when streets in Dudley did not want to have sewers brought in, and I'm not gonna name them. There were fourteen houses on the street and it's not far from you. And they decided, no, they didn't want the betterment, they were all on private systems. The majority of those people have had to put in raised systems now that cost them twice as much as what it would have cost them to ever tie into the sewers at the time they could have done it. Every year you delay, costs don't go down, they go up. Maybe the selectmen will be able to find some kind of funding that assists when it comes time to do something like this. But you need to try and get a solution and not keep going back and saying it's not right and it's not fair. You gotta look to be part of the solution. It's not gonna go away. It just isn't.
If, if, if the cost for your street's a hundred thousand dollars and it's eleven thousand dollars left in the escrow account, that's, you know, ten percent of it you don't have to pay. But if that gets used up to fix the road bit by bit, then that, then you have to pay the full, you know? And if that happens over the next two, three, four or five years, and then that, that new cost is not a hundred thousand, it's a hundred and fifty, you're looking at the whole price. That's the, that's the current situation.
No, I understand that. Like I said, this, this situation.
There are private roads in Worcester. I don't know if you've driven by some of those, but they are an extreme example of what you might end up with.
Can't call them a road.
They are, they, I, I don't know what they are, they're, uh, I mean, wouldn't even qualify as a cow path, I mean, they're just horrendous.
Scrab, gravel, washed out, tank trails.
You don't wanna be in that situation, I don't think at all, you know, in terms of your property value, I don't know what impact that would have, but I can't see it as an enhancement.
It's just sad that we were all put in this situation.
It is, it is. It's sad that the original contractor didn't fulfill his part of the bargain and do what he was gonna do, handed it off to somebody else who then in turn didn't do it, and then a third party apparently, as I understand it, didn't do it. So everybody's been handing it off and you get stuck with holding the ball.
Because also the town didn't follow through.
Well, right now, unfortunately, again, the only option we have, the only remedy we can offer, the only thing that I believe is legally in place is the betterment process. I don't know what your neighbors have in mind or what their thoughts are, but.
I, I have not had any, uh, formal discussion with my neighbors, I'm not here to represent my neighbors.
Formal or informal, the, the discussion would have to be, if you don't like the situation as it is now, it's only, of course. It's gonna get more expensive and it's gonna be more work that has to be done, it's gonna cost you X plus.
And, and, and of course, you all know that we pay the same tax rate as those people who live on a public road and get the benefits of the town caring for that road. That's another thing I'd.
I have for decades paid taxes to support the schools. I don't have any children in the schools. I've made minimal usage of the fire for services and the police department and I'm paying taxes to support them. I mean, we're all paying taxes for things that we may not be using, but that's part of the collective community responsibility that you have. You can't be selective. If you're trying to do that, then you're really gonna have to argue the point.
Well, I think in this case of somebody having the benefit of being on a, on a public road and paying a certain tax rate and being on a private road and paying the same exact tax rate, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't exactly see.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but we're going round and round and we're getting nowhere. We can't help them. If they ask the direct question to us, what, you know, if, let me ask you the direct question.
I, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next on our agenda, we get the discussion of the zoning amendments for the annual town meeting.
We might have some people in the audience who wanted to come before the board, we might wanna take those.
Okay, so if we can.
Those first and then we could get to the ones that we don't have people here for.
Yep, all right, so if we can have the people for the zoning amendments come up? I think.
And then we, we have, uh, the South, this is for the marijuana cultivation overlay.
Yep.
And we have folks here for the Route one thirty-one change.
You know the dart as well.
Forty-five minutes ago.
We have, we have the Davis sisters who are gonna come on a conference call and we could take them after these other folks. Yeah, I would suggest we try to keep each of these brief because the hour's getting late.
Right, and we do have a hard stop at ten o'clock. Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Doherty, welcome back.
I'll, I'll finish that up in a minute. We'll, we'll be very brief. Um, essentially what we'd like to, the reason we came tonight is we would like to ask the board if you would please sponsor an article that would create a marijuana overlay district which would allow farms in the town to grow cannabis. Um, it's something that would help the farmers, we believe. And if you could do that, we would ask that you would put our farm on Corbin Road as, we'll, we'll be the first, we're not, we're not shy.
Okay. So basically, Bill, we would, we would sponsor the, one of the previous articles that we sponsored that didn't get voted on or was, was not?
The last time, we had split the article so that there would be creation of a district.
And then.
In town council, you can't create a district without putting a property into it. So we would create the district and identify this farm as in the district.
Which is what we did the time before that, but when we brought it to town meeting for voting.
Failed.
It failed by a small.
Just a couple of votes, right?
The choir was two thirds.
Yes.
You had a majority, as I recall, but not the two thirds.
Yeah.
All right, so we would just be basically sponsoring the first article, don't we?
I think so.
Okay. And that would be acceptable for you?
That would be fine, yes.
So we'll, we'll try it again?
You, you, again, you realize that this is subject to town meeting and, uh, vote on the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
We should require a vote.
It probably should, right? Well, yeah, I think we need to get the consensus to do, to do that.
Just to assume, because I think Tom joined the board after.
Right.
The first go-round.
I'm not sure how we worded that. Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we, uh, sponsor a, an article on the town warrant for the next town meeting to create a marijuana overlay district specifying the property owned by the Dohertys on Corbin Road as part of that overlay district.
Did we wanna include, we had a minimum acreage requirement in there last time?
Yes, we did.
We did.
I think we should put it, I think we should put it back exactly the way we had it.
That's what I was assuming, fifteen acres, yeah.
With a minimum of fifteen acres, I'll admit that. That's sufficient.
Yeah. Again, we don't, we'll put, you know, submit the exact language and then you can, you know, see that and respond to it.
Right, because we'll hold a public hearing on that before the town meeting. So if there's any adjustments we want to make, we can do that.
So, Rich, if you want to restate that motion?
Oh, thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sponsor a article on the town warrant for the next town meeting to create a marijuana overlay district specifying a minimum fifteen-acre property and using specifically the Dohertys Corbin Road farm as a specific location in that article.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous or just four?
No, I was opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
We had, we have a question in the back. I don't know, we have, do we need discussion before we voted on the motion?
Well, it's just, this is just to put it, just to answer the article. But we're going to hold a public hearing on this article if you want to, if you, but if you want to speak now, you can.
That was my question.
There'll be a public hearing.
Then how will you notify the butters?
It'll be advertised in a newspaper.
Notice, for this, the butters don't get notices.
The butters don't get notified. It's just going to be, it's going to be an article in the newspaper for, for, for what's coming up in the next town meeting.
The other thing, Mary, would be our agenda would indicate when the public hearing is being held. So if you watched our agendas, you should see it referenced on there for upcoming meetings. If you missed it, you don't happen to subscribe to the Worcester Telegram.
I do not.
Okay, good choice.
That's where it's advertised.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So the next article we had was still, we would be looking at-
Route 131.
131.
131. Thank you.
I think the gentlemen from 131 are here tonight.
Yes.
Good evening.
What's good evening. Welcome back.
Bill, did you have a chance to look at what the acreage was for the lots that are on 131 that we're discussing? Because I think originally we had proposed we'd be making it a business fifteen zone.
I haven't actually seen a delineation of the area that they're interested in, so no, I haven't.
Okay, so what we would need is, if you could, do we have their addresses? Could we get it from that?
Well, let's talk about it, see where they're at right now and what we might need.
Okay.
I received a petition last night. I haven't been able to get all the signatures from my neighbors. I need a few days to get that to you.
All right. Do you know, do you know how large your lot is right now that you live on?
One point, I'm not sure, it's one point seven three, maybe one point eight.
It's over an acre.
Yes.
And what about the other?
Mine is one, one ninety-seven.
You're, you're almost two acres.
Yes.
Yeah, so see, we don't have, we don't have a business forty-three zone, but we, we could create a business forty-three zone that had the same, that had the same regulations as the business fifteen zone. But just follows the forty-three, follows the res forty-three setbacks and things like that.
So you've basically asked folks in the neighborhood if they would support a change to business?
Yes.
And-
Business fifteen.
What's, what's been your response so far?
Yeah, nobody didn't oppose any, everybody signed the petition. We had one before made, only it was about a special permit which will not work, but all of the neighbors signed this petition before. Just have to kind of go and get those signatures back again, all of them.
Okay.
Do we, as far as the, if, if it was to be business zone, business fifteen, it's not just our lots that would be zoned, that it would be from seventy to eighty-six, is that correct?
Yeah, we could, we could look at where the, where the zoning delineation is now. We don't want to just do one or two lots. We'd like to try to solve the problem.
And how will that affect our neighbors' tax, taxes? Or would they go up?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect, I don't believe it would affect their tax rate because you're not adding any more land or anything. Now, all you're, all you're going to get is you're going to get a, a new use for the property.
Okay, I just want to be clear when I propose a petition to-
Your, your current zoning is what now, what are they in right now?
Res forty-three, I think.
Yes. I'm industri, it's industrial right up to my property line.
Industrial up on one side of you and the other side is res forty-three.
And he's where, res forty-three as well, we believe.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. So we would want to look at, we would want to look at, not necessarily, we, we want to look at making the, the, the lots zoned for business, but not necessarily business fifteen, because business fifteen designates a fifteen thousand square foot lot size. And we can't, there's no water and sewer on that road, so we couldn't have a fifteen thousand foot lot size. We'd have to have a forty, forty-three thousand foot, forty-three thousand square foot lot size, which I think, if you're in res forty-three now, we would have to come up with a, like a, like a business forty-three zone that would give you all the applicable uses that the business fifteen gives you, but on a one-acre lot, because you can't have, you don't have town water and town sewer, so you can't have a-
So, so business fifteen is kind of off the table?
It would have to be a business, I, I don't think, I think business fifteen is the only business zone we have, right, Bill?
Yes.
Light industry.
We, we would have to change the petition.
They don't allow houses in light industry.
No, well, no.
So every one of the houses would become non-conforming. We don't want to do that. So we need to, we need to, we might need to create a, a special zone which would have all the, all the uses of business fifteen, but on a one-acre lot.
Will that change the petition that we now, this-
Well, it was, what your petition should say is that you would like your, you would like your lots to be rezoned so that you can have business use on your lots.
All right, it's not really-
And then how we, how we technically get there is, you know, what, what we'll work with on a town planner and see how, how the best way to get there.
So if I'm following this, Mr. Chairman, we would have to create a new district that would require a article on the town warrant to do that.
Right.
And then there would have to be a subsequent warrant, article rather, to address the properties that we're discussing this evening. So two phases of this.
I believe you have to create, you have to create the zone first and then you have to ask for the, for the, for the lots to be rezoned to the, to the new zone.
And if we extended that from the gentleman, I don't know his name, on, on our right.
Jamie.
If, if we extended it from his property to the gentleman on the other side of the table and inclusive was the properties in between, those people would obviously be somewhat affected, at least with, we'd have public hearings, obviously.
They would gain the benefit of their property now being able to be used for businesses and they're on a-
They may not see that as a benefit though.
Well, they're on, they're on a major highway there.
I appreciate that, but-
So, this is eighty-six, the one-
Right.
In Blue, and then this is seventy down here that the other gentleman mentioned, which is partly industrial.
Right.
And partly residential.
So how many lots are we talking about from there to the industrial zone, Bill? Is it six or eight lots?
On that side of the road?
I believe those numbers-
So be, this one, which is split, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So nine lots.
On that side of the road, and if you wanted to do the other side as well.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't want to change, you know, the thing is, is for us, we can't like, pick and choose lots one at a time because that will be considered spot zoning. We have to do like a string of lots at a time. So as long as everybody's in between you are okay with that?
Yeah, everybody signed the petition.
If we, if we develop a new zone and we get those nine lots in and everything's okay, if the people across the street want to come to us, you know, I don't necessarily want to rezone both sides of the street if we don't have to.
What is that big parcel right across the street?
The largest parcel?
That one right there.
I think that's Southbridge Sheet Metal.
Oh, is that in Dudley?
So the petition we, that I received yesterday says the petition to use for business fifteen, that, that petition's not going to be any useful right as of right now.
I would just cross the fifteen off. Just say you want to use it for business. So if anybody says, what are the uses I'm going to have? You could direct them to the, to the zoning of business fifteen. You'd have all those uses, but you would have to have a minimum of forty-three thousand square feet.
Is that the church property? Is that the church property?
No, this is property of Roger Lacorice. He had come in with an A and R plan earlier in the year to split this off into, I think, three, four lots. Oh, so that's not Southbridge Sheet.
Wow, that's further down. I thought it might have been the church property.
This is a single family down here is a, a multifamily.
Which one is the church? Is that further down?
It's further down on the left, yeah.
So everything in the, in the, in the orange is, is res forty-three? Yes.
There's got to be businesses there in res forty-three already then.
Well, the only thing that would have been there is Whipperwill, many, many, many years ago.
Well, the winery.
Well, the winery's Malaya, they were up in the back, backside. I don't think they extended down to Southford.
That's right where John's Way is, the winery was there.
Yeah, John's Way, but that's, that's off the high, off the road, isn't it?
It's still res forty-three.
Okay, res forty-three. But the only, the only retail establishment on the, on the road itself would have been Whipperwill many, many years ago. Before they had the fire and then-
He was saying there used to be a pool where he lives, there used to be, or next to his, your house.
Yeah, yes, the house before me.
Was it, they sold swimming pools?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was a paving, they were, they took paving too, I think, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was thinking of, you know, because the, the business, the business fifteen zone gives them all the uses they're looking for, but we don't have a business forty-three zone, so we'd have to kind of like create that. Because of the, because of what I said, you know, these, these houses aren't on water and sewer, so you couldn't set it up for, because otherwise, people that have two acres would try to come back and have a, you know, have a subdivision of lots to fifteen thousand square feet, and we can't allow it because there's no way you could put a septic system in a well on fifteen thousand square foot lots.
So just going down the street, this one is one point six seven acres.
I believe that's mine.
Okay, this is point five acres.
How much?
This one here?
Point five?
Point five. This one is point five.
Those are across the street.
That one is point, almost point six. This one is four point five six. One point four nine, one point six seven, and one point nine seven.
So there are a couple half-acre lots.
Two non-conforming lots, is what you're telling me.
The problem is the half acres, yeah, if it's a forty-three zone. But you can't, I don't even think you can do a, well, you know, a well in a septic system on a half acre legally today.
Well, they're there. They're there.
Right, they're grandfathered.
Right.
They would be-
But they're also developed, so. If you created a res half-acre lot, made a business half-acre lot, maybe, that would go to twenty, about twenty-two, five or something. For it to be about a half an acre. It's not much to-
Well, I mean, those, those, right now, if it's res forty-three, those houses are already non-conforming.
Right.
So making it a business forty-three, it's not going to be any more non-conforming.
So if you, but if you stayed with the business fifteen, you're not really allowing a lot of additional development because most of those lots are already developed and don't have-
But you don't think somebody that has like a, somebody that has a four-acre lot wouldn't try to come over and-
Sure, this one, yeah, could perhaps do a subdivision of theirs.
Because I think business fifteen only requires a hundred feet of frontage. So they try to take a hundred-foot frontage in a fifteen thousand square foot lot and develop it, and you can't legally do it.
Right.
Anyway, I just don't want to create something that's not right. That's what I was thinking, if we could have the business forty-three.
Do we need time to kind of work this thought through just a bit more than we've been able to do so far this evening? Seems that we, we have some ideas, but we don't really have anything that we feel entirely comfortable with at this point. As, I, I guess you could say we're kind of thinking this thing through at the time, trying to find a way to do this, but I don't know that, I, I'm not, I don't know that we're feeling that, that warm fuzzy feeling at this point.
I would just be nervous zoning it anything less than an acre because it's in a, it's in res forty-three now. So my thought was do a, a business forty-three with all the same allowances for the business fifteen, but you're going to follow the res forty-three setbacks and frontages and all that stuff. And the houses that are there currently on a half-acre lot would still be, would still be grandfathered.
That makes sense to me. So as, as Richard mentioned, then, we need two articles. One, to create the new business forty-three, and then to rezone these properties into it. And I, I think it would follow the same logic we had last time with it needs to be in one article.
Right, I think we need, I think we need some town council input on that because we don't want to do the same thing that we had with the cannabis where we tried to do it in two and they said, no, it has to be one. So let's, let's get that input before we get to town meeting, so it's not thrown out at the last minute.
The problem with that was it was an overlay district that we were creating, cannabis overlay district. And they, the town councils wanted a specific, they needed a specific property to be the anchor or sponsor.
I think the principle's the same. You can't create a district without putting something into it.
Well, we're putting several lots into it.
We, we would be, but it has to be one article.
Okay, but let's, let's get, let's get the determination from town council if we can. So like a business forty-three plus, what did we say? There was nine lots there together?
Yeah.
Nine lots.
Are you looking at property across the street or just on that side?
Across the street too.
You are across the street as well, okay.
I went, my neighbor crossed the streets, signed the petition too, so.
Okay, so if you're going to go across the street, then you, you, you got to get, you got to get the people in a, in a row. Like if you get one person in the middle that says no, it's going to be a problem because we can't, we can't skip them, we can't pick or choose. It's not like a checkerboard, it's got to be all, all or nothing.
So if, if the guy across the street was only signing it to help you and doesn't care if his stays res forty-three, then you might want to just deal with your side of the street.
That makes it even better work for, for me too. I mean, just, just-
Am I, am I saying that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Plus even when, when you start driving that road in, in the part where there's a, an industrial forty-three, more, all the businesses, they on the right side of the road. There's pretty much none of, none of them on the left side of the road.
Southbridge Tool is in the church, I guess, on the left side.
Well, then there is a church, and then on the left side is that-
So we could just stay on our side of the road for-
Yeah, so there's this, this is, on the other side of the street, the only, only business is, the church, I don't know if it's considered a business, but the church, you got the school.
It's kind of exempt on your zoning.
The church and the school, I think they're both exempt.
They, they all on their left side.
Yeah, they're on the opposite side, but we can stay on our side, it's just fine.
Okay. I mean, I think it'll be easier for you because you don't have to get everybody to agree. If you can, if you can get the people from your, from your house to agree, that's nine, nine lots and everybody's in agreement, that's easy, that's not a problem.
Sure, yeah.
As far as the zoning commissioner, did anything transpire as far as lifting the cease and desist order on me?
We, we, we did send him a letter telling him that we're going to try to address this at the next town meeting?
Uh, I did not, no.
Okay, so if we could, if we could tell him that we're trying to address this for the next town meeting, so maybe he would give him a cease, would revoke your cease and desist?
Yeah, until we saw it.
If we can't speak for him, he might, he might choose to just to wait and see what happens with the-
Town meeting.
It was proposed that the last time I was here, I just wondered if it was-
We're, we're going to, we're going to try to do our best. I mean, unfortunately, we can't take any action until town meeting, but, you know, we told, we told you that the last time, we would, we would try to do our best to solve your problem. Because we feel for the situation where you were given a business license and you, you built your business and then you were told afterwards you can't have it there.
Right. Okay.
And I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a bad place to have the business that you have, and nobody's complaining about it, so.
No, no, it's, uh-
Okay.
The speed limit on the road is forty-five miles per hour, pretty much, so it's kind of residential zone, but the speed limit on the road is not kind of residential.
They start at forty-five, don't they?
I don't think, I think they start at sixty-five, actually.
Yeah.
And I'm still wondering why there isn't a box on that application for that business license that says what area is zoned.
Hello, please enter your six-digit conference code.
Because that would have stopped this whole problem. If you had gone for your business license and somebody had said, you're zoned this, you can't have that business here, sorry.
Reason why it was zoned, the reason I, I got my permit is because the lots are marked improper.
Oh, on the town map?
Yeah.
Oh.
His, he's number seventy, I'm number seventy, but on the, on the map, it's his he's seventy. So when I went to go, and I never caught it, she's like, yeah, you're industrially zoned to here, which is fifty-six, So when I went to go, and I never caught it, she's like, yeah, you're industrially zoned to here, which is fifty-six, which is, that's what it's saying on the, on the plan is. Fifty, I'm fifty-six, oh, you're industrially zoned, no problem, there you go.
Okay.
I didn't even realize this when I was, I must have stayed at that thing for three hours.
So they did check the zoning and it was just an error on-
It's an error, yeah, all the numbers are improper on, on it, so it was.
All right, okay.
Anyways.
We'll try and fix it.
I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hi, Jean, um, we just started the conference call, can you sign it?
So, we're setting up a conference call with the Williams sisters, Jean Davis and Janice Williams.
They were here two weeks ago.
They were at the previous meeting to talk about changes to the conservation district.
They were, they were here two weeks ago, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't, uh, or four weeks, four weeks ago.
Huh?
Not last meeting, the meeting before.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, we gave them two meetings to think about and see what they wanted to do. So we kind of left it open-ended.
Mm-hmm.
And so I thought, we take this opportunity to have them speak for themselves about what they were, what they would want to request.
Office isn't in the past, right?
I can run the agendas, probably, I can tell.
No.
Mr. Chairman, while we have a minute, I, I could bring up another, another proposed zoning change.
Okay.
Um, can you do my-
Whoa, hello.
I can hold off.
Say, we don't know, uh, is there a local access number on television?
No, it's not being broadcast live.
Oh, it isn't, oh, okay, oh, all right. Okay.
Hi, Jean, you're on the planning board floor now.
Whoa, I'm sorry, that's a bit, can you say that again?
Yeah, you, you're up, go ahead. We can hear you.
So what are we supposed to do? Tell what we want? Or what?
Yes.
What do you want to know?
Yes, tell us what, what you're thinking about doing, and we have, uh, Duran Simsak present as well, so, but why don't you start us off and tell us what you're thinking about for that property.
Um, we'd most of all, well, we'd like to have it revert to its original status back when my, which was, you know, back to what my father's intention was, that that land would be, since the whole farm was in agricultural restriction, preservation, preservation restriction, rather, that that one sixteen acres was going to not be in any kind of restriction, so that if family members wanted to build a house, if, you know, somebody, if finances were needed, that's what we would like to see happen.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I think the last time you were with us, ladies, I maybe rather facetiously suggested you might look back at the Webster Times. I did have occasion to do that, and, uh, there was zoning on the town warrant, uh, published in the Webster Times in multiple pages, actually, and with a very detailed map on January twenty-ninth of nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, that zoning map was approved at the town meeting on February fifteenth of that year. And, uh, somewhat, and maybe some, might surprise you somewhat, that that, um, the vote was unanimous. And it did indicate that as conservation, and it was very specific in terms of identifying what conservation meant in terms of the uses and for each of those areas on that map, what could be done and couldn't be done.
Yeah, okay.
Apparently, it was the town practice to publish in the Webster Times, probably saved them a lot of paper, uh, although it did take quite an extensive, uh, coverage in the, in the Times.
I can only tell you that Elliot Williams, our father-
That's what they all-
That's nothing he ever kept track of, he worked unbelievable amounts of hours, and that's just not something that he would have dealt with.
And who would, who would suspect the town of just taking your property?
Well, it's, it's-
You know, you don't even, about it, you know, with no notification, whoops, sorry, we're taking sixteen acres?
Excuse me, I do believe that there was an attempt by the town to provide notification with regards to publication of the warrant, and there was reference in some of what I saw, I believe, that Elliot Williams was on a conservation board at approximately that same time. I don't know if that was the father or not.
He was on a station board with the, um, what was it, in Holden, in Holden with the, um, he, he had nothing to do with Dudley, he, he had nothing to do with-
No, he had absolutely nothing to do with Dudley.
He would not have been aware of what was, might, might be pertaining to his property with regards to conservation at that time?
No, he was on the Southern Worcester County Soil Conservation District in Holden for the federal government. They put in drainage tile, was what he was primarily, um, involved with. And only marginally, he put in a lot of drainage tile here on the farm.
Uh, well, be that as it may, I believe that, uh, we're going back to nineteen sixty-nine and it was approved by the town, I mean, at town meeting. Uh, I believe, Bill, the only recourse the ladies have at this point is to approach town meeting again. Uh, but they have, as, as property owners, they can file a, or, or ask for a, uh, article of the warrant.
Yes, a landowner can petition to have their property rezoned, or the planning board could take it up and do it for them, right?
Right. But either way, we would be asked to make a, we would be asked to make a, a comment at town meeting about the article, whether they did it themselves or we, we sponsored it, right?
No.
You, on any zoning article, the planning board has to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Correct.
Whether you sponsor it or not.
Yeah, okay.
I want to add something, and that's that, uh, it is not uncommon in this town for people to have had large parcels of land, not have been aware, that's when zoning was first established, I think, is nineteen sixty-nine. But we had it probably six to seven years ago with Mr. Collins' land on Oxford Ave, where the zoning changed it to light or to industrial, and that family petitioned to have it changed back, because they did not realize their parents' intent was for all of his land that he had there to be able to be used, that if they wanted to build a house, they could. So it isn't uncommon that people don't realize, you don't get a certified letter, it's just published, and if you're not really town savvy, they petitioned the town and that was rechanged back at a town meeting. So they would be able to use that land as their father intended to build single-family houses.
I appreciate the fact, I would say that I, looking back at the copy I saw of the Webster Times, that was a full-page map. I mean, if you got the Webster Times, unless you went right to your birdcage with it, you saw that map.
I also-
Do you have any idea how, how many hours they would be right in the middle of first cutting haying, where they might not be done till eight at night, come home, nine o'clock at night, and they would come home and collapse? So, no, you don't understand what it was to be a farmer.
Again, they, they brought up-
I'm not quite sure how that-
They brought up a good point at the last meeting, that their father had put additional land so that it would be preserved and not built upon, and he did that with their farm. He did not do that with his sixteen acres, he did not make an intent to definitely put it so that it would not ever be developed. That was a parcel that he kept for his family. And that's part of what has been a sore spot with them, that if you look in that area, there is a little bit of inconsistency, and I'd like for you to take a write-out to Hayden Pond Road, and look at that and Henry Marsh Road, and look at the land that occurs, it has frontage on three roads, and it's got parcels cut out that don't come under what the zoning change did, and a strip property across the street that wasn't affected. And that, there may have been a little bit maybe of thought for taking care of oneself somewhere down the road, the way that it was instituted. It didn't all go totally to conservation, so they're looking, and you can think about it, and without planning board support, it may be more difficult, but if their route is they have to come up with the petition, and that's what they're going to do, they'll have to have a hearing no matter what. But they're looking at, that the intent was the same as what Mr. Collins had, that the land was to be for the family, not for development for industrial sites that are over there, and in their case, to become worthless for them.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we're up against a hard stop for ten o'clock, so I'm going to try and make this quick. As far as I see it, there's really only two questions here. Question number one, what is that parcel going to be rezoned to? Question number two, whether or not they go on their own and submit to the town to have it rezoned, or whether or not we sponsor the article to have it rezoned. So, my first question is, do you know, do the applicants have an idea of what specifically? They, they said they want it back to what it used to be. I don't know what it was zoned back then, but I don't think that's realistic.
No.
I think res eighty-seven was what we talked about last time, was a possibility.
It has to be a meeting of the minds, you brought up some good points as to the size of the lots that could occur. I think they want to go from not being worth zero to having some value for future use, is what it amounts to. So if it means having bigger lots and fewer lots, that's certainly still better than what they have at this point. And I wouldn't expect you, at ten o'clock tonight, after all you've been through, to be able to make a dec- decision on it. I think you need to take a write-out, look at the land, see the fact of what the land looks like is part of why there is value to it, that somebody wouldn't have just given that up without really giving it a little more thought.
If I may, real quick?
May I?
We just had two people in front of us who said, private parties were choppering to help them with their zoning issues. I don't understand the issue, is, let's make it a, a res eighty-seven, let's sponsor it, and let's go forward, I mean, why are we talking?
I agree, I mean, let town meeting decide, if town meeting comes back and says no, then it's no, but I mean, we, we, we're, we're an elected board to do what we can for the townspeople, and they're the townspeople, they own the land right now, but they have no use, no use for it. You know, we're talking about sixteen acres coming out of conservation, as you met, mentioned, Bill, there's houses all around it. I mean, I've driven out, I've looked at the land, there's houses all around it, so, I mean, I think, I think, I, I, I think what you're saying is true, it does have value. And I mean, I think res eighty-seven is a fair, is a fair zoning, and I mean, if you've got sixteen acres at res eighty-seven, it could be eight lot, eight house lots. So, I mean, I'm, anybody want to make a motion that we, we sponsor the article for rezoning of sixteen acres to res eighty-seven out of the conservation district? For the Williams sisters.
How do you want a word that we, that we, that we're going to sponsor the article?
Sure, we'll sponsor an article at town meeting, we'll let, we'll let the, the town body decide whether they want to do it or not.
Hey, Dan, why don't you do this one?
We can't do any more.
I make a motion as the chairman just voiced for this property.
Okay.
If we can do that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four, Mr. Five, unanimous.
Nope.
No, you're, you're going to be, you're going to be an A, okay. Well, you did the research, so I give you credit.
It's not clear to me, it seems to me, and I know the votes were taken and businesses closed as far as that issue is concerned, it seems clear to me that there was real attempt at notification. The Webster Times in the nineteen fifties had circulation in the neighborhood of eight thousand. I don't know what it was in nineteen sixty-nine, but it was probably considerably more than it is today. Uh, I think the town made a legitimate effort to get that out in front of the public, it was before the town meeting. There was a unanimous vote at the town meeting, there was ample opportunity if someone saw that that was not their real intent in terms of that property, and it did identify in the Webster Times what could and couldn't be done with conservation in each of the different districts that were identified. It would have been opportunity for them to have raised the question, or to have voted against the issue, the motion.
Uh, I, I, I respect your opinion, uh, Richard, but, uh, just coming from my own background, I mean, all circumstances are different. I know in nineteen sixty-nine, if my parents' farm had been rezoned by this town, neither one of my parents would have had any idea that it was going on. My father, my father did not read or write or speak English.
Mr. Williams was in some ways involved in conservation. I suspect that something as local and conservation-oriented as what we're talking about this evening would have somewhere appeared on his radar screen.
Well, a lot of involved in conservation back in nineteen sixty-nine meant that some father, some farmer with influence came and spoke to this farmer and said, hey, you know what you should do, you should take all your property and put it into this.
The votes were taken, we're up against, we're past the ten-minute hard stop, so I'll submit that we, I would make a motion where you adjourn.
We'll get you there, Dan. We can continue this, you know, zoning discussion to the next meeting, if you like.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything else that we need to act on, we don't have any invoices.
We have some invoices where we can sign, do we have any?
No.
We don't have any, okay. All right, so, uh, Mr. Clark has made a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, good evening.
We agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
So for the next-
Is that off, because I'm going to tell you a fun story with your zone.